Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you. Thank you. I don't want the people watching at home to feel like we're up here all alone. Um, thank you and welcome to the Tuesday, August 12th, 2008, meeting of the Glendale City Council. Mr. City Clerk, could you call the roll?
Council members Najarian.
Here.
Quintero.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Yusefian.
Here.
Mayor Draymond.
Here. And, uh, it's like tonight, we have flag salute led by Councilmember Quintero.
Please join me in the present region. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for this evening's invocation. This Thursday, August 14th, marks the anniversary of Victory in the Pacific Day, the official end of the war against the fascist forces of Imperial Japan. Many Americans who were affected by this arena of the Second World War cannot forget its indelible mark on their lives and on our nation's history. And those of us who were born after it should not forget the sacrifices made by both civilian and military to ensure the liberation of the people of Asia and our own freedoms here. I ask that we keep in mind this special day tonight as we pray and give thanks for our freedoms and liberties. We pray that our children and grandchildren will live in a world free of violence and horrors of war. We pray for men, we pray for the men and women of our armed forces who answered their nation's call and went to foreign shores on islands throughout the Pacific, in air on land and sea to preserve our nation's liberty. We pray for peace as always, even as war wages on in other parts of the world today. We pray for the innocent who are touched most heavily by war's destructive hand. Watch over them and protect them. Amen.
Mr. City Clerk, could we have your report, please?
The agenda for the August 12th, 2008 regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Thursday, August 7th, 2008, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you very much. Uh, could we have the next item, please?
A 3 is presentation and appointments and a 3 is agenda preview for the meeting of August 19th, 2008.
Um, thank you. Uh, let us go to Assistant City Manager Bob McFaul.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Next week, uh, August 19th, there will be no, um, specific action items on Housing Authority. The Redevelopment Agency, however, does have a public hearing. The Director of Public Services will be presenting a report regarding a 34th, 34 space parking exception for Yoga to Life located at 33 and, 33, three and a half North Brand Boulevard. There's a joint meeting between the Glendale City Council and the Redevelopment Agency on a number of items related to the Embassy Suites project located at 800 North Central. There's also a joint meeting of the Glendale City Council, the Glendale Redevelopment Agency, and the Glendale Housing Authority with one item. The Director of Community Development and Housing will be presenting a report on the discussion of inclusionary housing in lieu of the update for the San Fernando Road Corridor Redevelopment Project. The city council meeting has a couple of items that night at 6 o'clock. Um, there's two items, uh, two action items that are anticipated. First is a report on the Arts and Culture Commission, and secondly, a cosponsorship request from the Home Minute Men. There'll also be two hearings. One is an appeal of conditional use permit for property located at 6410 San Fernando Road. Uh, that actually is going to be a motion to continue that public hearing to a future date. And then, secondly, there will be a hearing of, from the Director of Planning on the Glendale Register of Historic Resources, uh, listing and the Mills Act contract for property at 2964 Edmonton Road. That would be it for next week.
Thank you, Mr. McFaul. Uh, Mr. City Clerk, what are the other agenda items under presentations and appointments?
A 3B is nomination assignment for the Arts and Culture Commission, seat number one. This is for Mayor Draymond. A 3C is nomination assignment for the Arts and Culture Commission, seat number two. This is for Councilmember Najarian to make. A 3D is a nomination assignment for the Audit Committee by Councilmember Quintero. A 3 is a nomination assignment for Planning Commissioner, Councilmember Weaver. Those are the assignments.
Thank you very much. Uh, let me, at this point, under presentations, Mr. City Clerk, take one little item out of sequence. Uh, we have a representative or representatives from the Los Angeles Civil Rights Association who are here and had asked to make a brief presentation, and I'm going to take them out of sequence with some priority because they have another event to get to or another presentation to make yet this evening. So, if I may, but I'm sorry, sir, I don't know your name.
Good evening to the city council. My name is Eddie Jones, President of the Los Angeles Civil Rights Association. This is Ms. Lawanda Payton, and this is her son, Maurice Glendale Woodson III. Uh, this letter that I'm about to read was given to the mayor, uh, city manager, city attorney, chief of police, and now I'm going to leave it here with city council. I write this letter to inform you of a case of ongoing discrimination by your department toward Mr. Maurice Woodson III. He's a 26-year-old African American who has been the object of racial profiling since he was 14 years old. He's been stopped by police as he would walk throughout Glendale without any justifiable cause. Often, he was thrown to the ground and made to endure humiliating body search. He has been stopped several times by police while driving his car. Latest incident took place on July 25th, 2008, when, according to the police report, Mr. Woodson was pulled over for a broken taillight. He was accused of selling drugs, and in the inside of the car was searchers and his trunk of the car. There was no reason for such action. If the initial charge had to do with a taillight, then he should have been given a ticket and sent on his way. He was never given a ticket for the taillight, and no drugs were found in his car or on his person. This act perpetuates by officers of your department was humiliating, uncalled for, and can easily lead to police brutality. Over all the years that he has lived in Glendale's, these forms of harassment have been a part of his routine existence. He requests that a full investigation be done on his behalf to put the end to the police targeting him as a possible criminal based on his race. Our organization wants to work with you to find ways to avoid this behavior in the future. In conclusion, Mr. Woodson is a law-abiding member of society with no criminal background. His only crime has been being black in a predominantly white community. In this day and age, the walls of prejudice must be brought down in all segments of society. This especially is true in the department that strives to uphold our sacred laws of equal rights and protection under the law. Please help us to end this continuing trend profiling against my client and to the future. Sincerely, Eddie Jones, President of the L.A. Civil Rights Association. C.C. James E. Starburg, Glendale City Manager. C.C. Scott H. Howard, Glendale City Attorney. C.C. Sergeant Stuart Bracken, Administrative Services Division, Attention, Glendale Police Internal Affairs. And C.C. John Draymond, Mayor of the City of Glendale. And in closing, this young man also works for the City of Glendale. Uh, he works in the sanitation department and has been an outstanding, hard-working young man. And, uh, that is my presentation. And here is the letter, and I have a copy for everyone on the board.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Jones. Uh, just for the record, so that public understands, uh, yes, we were C.C.'ed just now. Just got this in my hands, and I don't know, Mr. City Manager, whether your copy just came to you as well, so...
Oh, yes, actually, the City Clerk just showed it to me. We are making copies for everyone on the council, including the city attorney's office.
Thank you.
Actually, earlier today, I went to all the offices and gave them to your executive secretaries, and I got them stamped, and I have other copies in my hand if you need copies right now.
Uh, if you could give them to the City Clerk, that would be helpful.
Mr. Mayor, as requested, this will be fully investigated by the Police Department and the City Attorney's Office and report back.
Okay, I appreciate that, and I thank you for taking the time to come down.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Mayor and City Council.
Thank you. All right. Um, let us return to our regularly scheduled edition of Freshly Baked Out Rage, and, uh, Mr. City Clerk, if you could, uh, the next item, please.
This portion of the meeting is for city council and staff comments. We're on item number four on the agenda.
All right. Um, I have a statement I want to make, uh, under council comments, and it is a little unusual, and so I don't often prepare comments, but I did in this case, not only so I would make sure I wouldn't forget some things I wanted to say and how I meant to say them, but also so that it would help me keep them somewhat brief. See the city attorney, uh, smiling. Um, so let me, let me go to those now. As you know, it is customary for the mayor to make comments at this portion of the agenda at the end of this section, uh, after his colleagues on the dais have done so. Tonight, however, there are issues facing our city and our citizens which are significant and require special attention from your city council and your mayor. So this evening, I will break that, with that tradition, and make this comment on the topics of considerable import before turning to my colleagues here on the dais. I've spent the last week speaking to a great many Glendale citizens in many geographic areas of our city. I've also spent untold hours in conversations with city staff, civic organizations, and their respective leadership. I would like to state that there is a perception in the community that issues arising from the publication of an article in Pasadena Weekly were somehow, or are somehow, designed to delay or derail an expanded and meaningful smoking ordinance in our city. Uh, nothing could be further from the truth. The direction given by a consensus of council members that you see here before you for the creation of a new smoking ordinance with new smoking restrictions is moving forward and has not changed. What has occurred is an entirely separate issue focusing on the comments of Councilmember Weaver, the intent of those comments, and whether the characterization of those comments by a reporter resulted in a misquote of Councilmember Weaver, or whether the reportage was, in fact, even remotely accurate. I have my own opinion as to the credence which should be lent to a reporter who apparently had no idea who he was interviewing, or a publisher who lives in the city of Glendale and apparently has no idea who his council members are, or a publication which states that its reporter is accurate but works nights as a performer, comes to work exhausted, is overworked and underpaid, but usually gets it right, except when they get it entirely wrong. Now, some will say that because I am reluctant to, in quotes here, "hang" an elected official on the basis of this comedy of errors that apparently is the Pasadena Weekly's role in this mess, that I'm somehow letting Mr. Weaver off the hook. To the contrary, the fact is that I, or any of us, believe that Mr. Weaver is a victim or of circumstance, or believe that he is the author of ethnically insensitive comments is, frankly, no longer the point. The point is that Mr. Weaver finds himself directly at ground zero of a firestorm of inflamed sensibilities, hurt feelings, damaged ethnic relations, and has plunged the city government into a tailspin of mistrust and accusations of racism. Sadly, Mr. Weaver, whether you were misquoted, misunderstood, or the mere victim of innuendo, the ability of this city government to move forward with the trust of all of the people of this city intact at this moment rests on your shoulders alone. I understand that some of my colleagues are considering censure or some other official form of condemnation. My opinion and the direction in which this council moves from here will be determined largely by the words you will utter and the tone you will set. Your words, Mr. Weaver, can unite or divide this city. I remind all of my colleagues that there is nothing more human than to make a misstep or to cause others pain, whether intentional or unintentional. It is equally humanizing to say, "I'm sorry," to the extent that I, or any of us, contribute to that pain, whether perceived or real. I will have some other comments, but I felt it important to set the tone for this city as its mayor and this council before we move to further council comments. Mr. Weaver has asked that I go to him next. He also has a family, uh, health issue that has come up of a somewhat emergency nature, so I will go to him now.
Thank you for the buildup, Mayor. If you can call it a buildup. As I reached my wife about 6 o'clock, she's sick. I've been concerned about her, and I'd like to get home to her, but I didn't want to go two weeks without reading a statement. So, I'd like the mayor to get this in sequence the way I wanted it. I've written it down. I know all the difficulty in responding to ugly charges of ethnic insensitivity. I know whatever I say will pit my explanation against that of a columnist who's reported to be overworked, stressed, underpaid, tired, et cetera. In preparing my thoughts for tonight, I thought about one of the founding principles of this country, that one is innocent until proven guilty. However, in some quarters, I've been convicted even before I state my side. In the Pasadena Weekly, I was quoted as making the following statements. One, I don't care if it's popular, it's the right thing to do, but there will be a lot of opposition from one segment of the population loves to smoke. Yes, approximately 20% of our ethnically diverse population smokes. That's a fact. Two, one segment of the population shouldn't be able to control the lives and health of everyone, but this will be turned into an election issue. You want to keep a horrible habit going over the three guys up for reelection this year, and if you think I am wrong, then vote me out of office next time, but I'm not letting this go. Yes, my three colleagues running for reelection have taken the position that smoking should be allowed in apartments and condominiums, despite what statistics show and speakers have said in these chambers about the impact of secondhand smoke on residents. I think they will, this will be a major campaign issue, and my colleagues will have to deal with that during the election season. Third, with all the evidence out there about secondhand smoke, how can anyone tolerate those effects and being spread at a restaurant? That's a true statement, and this council's already dealt with that issue. In the article the columnist wrote, many statements on his own, possibly extracting, extrapolating from interviews with others, or made up from his own interpretation of smoking-related issues in the community based on his knowledge of what he has heard or read. A statement that has piqued some in our city, as outlined by the Armenian National Committee, is that I supposedly said, "I was referring to the city's substantial and politically influential Armenian committee, where smoking tobacco, both in cigarettes, phorm, and hukas," I hope that's how you say it, "is widely enjoyed after-dinner cultural tradition." That statement by the columnist and attributed to me, I never said. So there is no apology warranted. I will not apologize for what I never said. Representatives of the Pasadena Weekly stated that the author talked to me the day after the council meeting confirmed I said all those things. He had called, and I asked him what the heck he was doing in that article. I told him that I did not say all those things attributed to me, even though he stood here and said I did confirm. That is not true. The Armenian National Committee let Mayor Draymond know that they were going to go after me big time. Armenian National Committee then wrote what I consider an inflammatory email and sent it to their membership. The message did not include the article. It was the Armenian National Committee's interpretation of the article. My intent, according to Armenian National Committee's interpretation of the article, was to build support for my proposal on the basis inciting anti-Armenian sentiments in the community. Contrary to the assertions of the Armenian National Committee, many in the Armenian Committee and others have contacted me expressing their support for my position, and that I said nothing improper. As an example, my support, excuse me, my support for all segments of this community runs deep, including the Armenian community. As an example, in April 2006, as mayor, I spoke at the Armenian genocide event at the Alex Theater. Dr. J. Michael Hagopian was the guest speaker. In case you don't know who he is, he's out at, at other school, UCLA, and he received two nominations for Emmys for writing and producing The Forgotten Genocide, the first full-length feature film on the Armenian genocide in 1915. I was sitting next to his wife. I got up, I gave my speech that I wrote on my own, and afterwards, when I sat down, Mrs. Hagopian had tears in her eyes, and I asked, "What's wrong?" And she said that was the best speech she had ever heard and asked for a copy of my speech. I was flattered, blown with belief, and honored, and provided her with a written copy. Being falsely branded as ethnically insensitive is personally hurtful and the furthest thing from the truth. So what is really going on here? Let's call it what it is, politics. For those who have paid close attention, the rhetoric against me has escalated over the past year. There have been attempts to engineer the vacation of my council seat in an effort to create a safe seat, making it easier for my three colleagues to be reelected. It is indeed sad and disappointing that an inappropriate statement has been attributed to me that has literally now taken on a life of its own. What this committee needs is for people to come together as one, not be torn apart by political agendas. A Chinese proverb says, "A rumor goes in one ear and out many mouths." A political campaign brings with it rumors, whispers, and innuendos. It is time to refocus on the people's business and for all of us to help move the community forward. All I can say to everyone is how sorry, sorry, I am that we are having this discussion tonight and possibly polarizing our city even more. Finally, as for the calls of my resignation, that game of political poker will not work. I intend to stay on and perform the important task for which I was elected by the public. Thank you for listening, and I hope I always at least stress one point of view that some of you might choose to believe, because I would never, ever have done what I've been accused of. With that, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to go home and see my elderly wife.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver.
Well, I have some questions, uh, Mr. Weaver.
That is entirely...
Is this a bad time for it?
Well, go ahead.
Just want to also, before you go forward, Mr. Najarian, caution all of my colleagues before the city attorney jumps on my head and bounces up and down, that we need to be careful where we go with questions and answers during, um, council and staff comments short of agendizing the topic, so I think I...
Well, how far can we go, Mr.? I mean, I have several questions, uh, more or less clarification on Mr. Weaver's remarks.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Councilmember Najarian, again, just to reiterate what the mayor said, the purpose of the council comments, or comments after all communications, is to make brief comments and brief responses, so to extent there are questions for clarification, um, I don't see a problem with that, but we have to make sure that we do not engage in a discussion on the topics at hand.
Not oral communication, it's council comments.
It's the same issue. The Brown Act prohibits discussion of items not on the agenda. It does allow brief comment, um, and to extent we enter into this back and forth, I'm wary of it becoming a discussion that could, we could be accused of Brown Act issues.
Okay, just shout if we go too far.
Will do.
Um, the first thing I want to say to Mr. Weaver is I want you to realize and not forget that, um, I was a very strong supporter of you in the last election, and I did a telephone call for you that was blasted to many households in Glendale. Um, the points that I'm making, well, that was done. Um, but I want to be clear, and I understand that you said that you did not make the particular reference that the Armenian community was the smoking segment of the population.
That's correct.
Um, therefore, do you unequivocally condemn the statements made attributed to you by Mr. Carl Kozlovsky?
Absolutely.
As being ethnically biased and completely inappropriate?
Yes, I do.
Well, I'm glad you said that. The last point I want to make, then, is, uh, I just want to state during your comments, you said that maybe all three of us were trying to create a safe seat in requesting your...
Yes.
...your resignation. Um, and I'd just like to say, I don't need a safe seat, Mr. Weaver. I don't plan on running a campaign by knocking out other candidates to get some cushion.
I appreciate that, because that rumor's come back to me many times in the community.
Um, to be honest, I was going to tear into you, but I think your apology is about all I can ask for you at this point, and condemning the statement of the Pasadena Weekly reporter. Uh, he is not here, we can't subpoena him, we don't want to even get into that at this point, but as long as you're clear, and you have been clear, you did not make the statement and you condemn those remarks as being ethnically stereotypical and biased, um, I have nothing else to ask.
Just add, he knew exactly who he was talking to, because we had exchanged calls three times before I could connect. He wasn't in, I left my name and phone number, and he had a doctor's appointment, so could I call him again in the morning? All this time, he thinks I'm Mayor Draymond? There's no way he did. And I said, "Whatever you write, would you please send me a copy so I could see what you printed?" I never got it. I told him that, and he says, "Oh, you never asked." I certainly did ask. So, and I, I don't get the guy why he did that. It created too much hard feelings in this community. No. I mean, I know Asians that smoke, I know Latinos that smoke, Anglo-Saxon, white that smoke. You know, come on. It's not one ethnicity. And that's what I said there when I said a segment of the community.
My last comment is, I just wish you had, um, stated this two weeks ago, and I think a lot of the furor and uproar would have just been, uh, nip that to bud, so to speak.
I had that in my speech, Mr. Najarian, and said I was getting too long, so I took it out. One of the things, when Mr. Silverman got up and read it, the mayor knew right away that wasn't him, so he asked to see it. And when he did, he looked at it and said, "Well, no, that had to have been Mr. Weaver." And he had it, and I said, "Let me see it." He didn't hear me, so after more discussion, I leaned back and says, "Can I see this?" So he passed it over to me and looked at it. I turned to Mr. Howard and says, "What the heck? I didn't say these things." And then I thought, "Well, this is not the appropriate time to engage in this, because we're in the middle of discussion on the smoking ordinance." So I thought, "I'd better go back, get my thoughts together and stuff, and then speak." Last week, I had family matters and couldn't. I'm sorry it dragged on like it, like it has. I hope the public does remember, and I made that statement to you, Mr. Najarian. When you first ran, I backed you big time, and I, and you wiped me out at the polls, and I said I would never support him again because he beat me like crazy. Remember that? I did say that to you, so you help me, I help you. You're good councilmen, so...
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Najarian. Before I...
That...
Well, are there any other questions for Mr. Weaver before he departs?
Speak now, forever. Hold your peace.
Do you say anything? Nothing.
Whatever you want to do, Mayor.
I'm asking if you have any questions or comments for Mr. Weaver.
No, I think I know Mr. Weaver for 20 years, so I know him as good as my brother. Uh, so I know what he said, what he didn't say. Nevertheless, uh, it has nothing to do with the smoking ordinance. That's a different issue. We dealt with that. I think he needs to live with his own conscience, and, uh, that's all I live with.
Mr. Quintero.
I'm going to, uh, comment after the oral communications portion.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, my consciousness is clear.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver.
Everybody.
Okay. All right. Um, let me return to the left, my left side here, Mr. Mayor Quintero, and ask you if you have any further council or staff comments on any other subject.
Um, just to be clear, after oral communication, I'll make a general comment. Um, I want to thank Officers Zakarian and Sergeant Gilkerson for putting together the National Night Out. It was in Montrose, Thursday night, was it?
Thursday.
On Thursday night, very well attended. Their organizational abilities are, Officer Zakarian was very worried that no one would show. He'd give a party and no one would show, but in fact, it was very well attended, very well put together, the different booths, lots of people from the neighborhood, as well as the merchants, so my congratulations to the cops unit, to the sergeant, and the officer responsible.
Councilmember, was, I'm sorry, was that, that was it? Councilmember Najarian?
Just to, just to dovetail on Mr. Quintero's comments, I would like to, uh, I think we would all like to extend a special thanks to the Nestle Corporation that, uh... to extend a special thanks to the Nestle Corporation that has not typically been that involved in city events, but they came out big time for the National Night Out and provided everyone with ice cream, of all products, and drinks, and what else, Officer? And Target also, Target Corporation. We appreciate their involvement in the community, supporting the National Night Out to rid our neighborhoods of gangs and drugs and crime. Thank you.
Well, Mr. Najarian, thinking that somebody might bring up Target from that night, they have these wonderful blinking Targets that I thought would be appropriate for all of our colleagues who pass that on, because what people in this city need a Target on them any more than those who already do?
Should we put it on the front or on the back?
To return the compliment, it's up to you, Mr. Yusefian. You wouldn't mind? Thank you. I'm sorry. Council, I'm sorry, Councilmember Najarian. Councilmember Yusefian.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to know at what point we're going to put the issue of the trolley or streetcar on brand or central on the agenda. As you heard, our consultant basically told us, "If we don't move, we may lose another couple hundred thousand dollars."
Let me interrupt only for a moment to ask, when would be the first ... well, let me put it a different way. Before any more time goes by, let us move that on to the agenda as quickly as we can.
Yeah.
Maybe this month, if possible.
So we don't lose the money?
Well, this month of August isn't, yeah. The consultant needs to be done with her work, and she's been working on pulling that report together. We will move it along as quickly as possible.
Do we have an idea of when it was scheduled?
Steve, do you recall?
No, Mr. Mayor, Members of the council, we had an affirmed date on that. We were still gathering information, including working on the funding part of it. There was issues about titles in the funding and working with our congressman on that as well.
All right, let's do this then. Let's get it on the calendar, and if somebody could email all of the council or-
We've got a date, we've got a firm date this week.
It would be a shame to lose that funding. Councilmember Yusefian?
Done.
Okay. I have one other, a couple of other items, one a little lengthier, but a couple that are short. I'm getting some emails about construction related to the flyover, night work in particular. And just so that those individuals know and the public knows in general, I was approached about this topic when we were beginning the conversation about how this construction would unfold. And you'll recall, Mr. Zern, that you and I spoke, and I wanted some kind of a clarification, would there be night work or no? And the answer was, absolutely not. And so, based on that, I gave assurances to a segment of our community that that was not in the offing, that we were not going there, that that wouldn't be considered. I want to make sure that nothing has changed in that regard, that we're not going to be backing, somehow backing into nighttime construction in that area, which those residents absolutely object to.
Mr. Mayor, Members of the council, when we started the project, we indicated that we wanted all work to be done during the day. Our contractor, with two exceptions that have come up, and we're still evaluating those, one of those is drilling the pilings for the bridge. Those pilings go very deep and require the closure of San Fernando Road, with the exception of one lane. We felt that would be very burdensome during the day. Caltrans would actually close the ramps to the freeway as well. There's also concern that the vibration of the trains will cave in the borings. These borings go 50 to 75 feet deep. We're trying to work with the railroad to see if there's any way we can work around that. But there is a great concern that these borings will just simply cave in once the vibration of the trains go through. The other area is the work that MTA is going to be doing, or, excuse me, MetroLink will be doing, when they raise or alter the tracks. And they prefer to do that during the evening, but we're working with them to see if we can get it done on the weekends, during the day, as opposed to working at night. They like to do that when the train traffic is limited. Obviously, night is the most limited, although the train traffic is greatly reduced on the weekends. So we're working with them to see if we can get that done over a weekend period instead of doing it at night.
What period of time are we anticipating on these pile-driving process? I need to tell the community, "No, they're not going to do any work at night, folks, except they're going to be driving piles."
Well, actually, the borings are, it's not pile-driving.
Oh, thank goodness.
It's a boring. Most of the pile-driving will be taking place during the day.
Mr. Mayor, can I suggest we get you a detail?
Yeah, I would like that.
I've heard the same thing, and I haven't seen the details either. Let me get you a full report-
Thank you.
...and we'll brief all of you on what's actually going on.
Thank you, I sure appreciate that. And then a comment was made during one of the afternoon sessions, a suggestion, I should say, that Mr. Milano, actually, that question, what are we really doing in this city in terms of public outreach, maybe in cooperation with the hospitals, in terms of, when we talk about smoking restrictions and all of that? And this council has worked very diligently to move that issue forward and to find consensus. As Mr. Yusefian pointed out, that's a separate issue than what we've been talking about here tonight, and that's moving forward. However, the restrictions aside, what are we doing as a city in partnership with organizations like our hospitals in this city? We're fortunate to have three substantial hospitals in this city, to work with them to create some kind of public outreach that is a no-smoking outreach, or a smoking assist, an anti-smoking assist, a program. And I don't think we have one. If we do, I'm just ignorant of it. But I'll bet you that if your mayor isn't aware of it, that probably most people aren't either. So I'd like to know what we can do in that regard to try to create such a program if we don't have that. Mr. City Manager?
We don't have such a program, but following the council's very first action, giving some general direction on the new smoking ordinance, we have begun to get some thought on those very issues and opportunities, including bringing the hospitals into the picture, especially those who have promoted most actively the passage of the ordinance, as well as we did just following your action, meet with our State Assemblymember, Mr. Corian, to seek his assistance in looking for funding opportunities to implement local cessation programs, smoking cessation programs. And so we'll bring you back more ideas on that. I think there's a great opportunity for the council and the mayor to play a role in encouraging the hospitals to actively engage in supporting those kinds of programs, as well as Mr. Corian felt there was a great opportunity there for possibly special legislation, to seek funding from the Smoking Litigation Fund to support smoking cessation programs, those communities that adopt stricter standards than are currently required by state law. So we'll bring you back a summary of some of those opportunities.
I would appreciate that. I think what I'm looking for is something I've heard more along the lines of various of my colleagues raising at various times, rather than just encouraging, to see how the city can partner, so that we're taking a leadership role in this, rather than simply pointing to other programs that are going on in the city. So that would be wonderful, if we could come back with that, so that we could see if we could be an active participant, since we are creating these restrictions. My last comment is a little bit complicated, and I want to, I want to talk about it at this point, and I will, again, try to keep it brief, so that we can then pleasantly and hopefully move on. I don't know if they're listening downstairs at GTV6. All of the issues that have been unfolding, I'd like to set this in a humorous context first, because what I'm going to say is not particularly humorous, and a kind of a serious topic, but I thought it's always good to start with some kind of humor. There's been a lot of ethnic issues, and very little of it has had to do with my own religion or ethnicity, and those questions were raised too. And I just thought, out of the creative juices that sometimes flow from your mayor, I have a small video, if we could, please. So with that-
Boo, boo, boo on you.
Boo, boo, boo on you too, sir. My point in this is that I want to, I want to set a, make the comment that I'm going to make now is not such a humorous comment, but I want to, I want to set it in a humorous tone to start. Now let's turn to the not-so-humorous. Right? As many of you know, I've served the citizens of Glendale since 1975, as a public advocate mostly, to this local government, but also to our county and our state, the state of California. I've lived and worked in this community my entire life, and have worked with and around the city government and its various departments and staff for a good portion of that time. In that time, I have come to have a great deal of respect for the men and women who work in various city departments, who by and large do an exceptional, exceptionally good job, day in and day out, to serve the residents of Glendale. That level of respect and admiration certainly has extended to our police department and the sworn and non-sworn who have continued to work and keep Glendale a safe place. In fact, our ranking as a very safe city is due in no small part to the efforts and hard work of the members of our police department, and the leadership of Chief Adams and the chiefs who have served before him. I believe our police department has worked hard to reflect the values that I and my colleagues on this council believe in, and that everyone wants in a police department, traits like integrity, responsiveness, fairness, respect, openness, professionalism, and diversity. I take a great deal of pride in the extent to which our department upholds and reflects these values. It is important that the Glendale community as a whole have confidence in its local government, and that we strive together to uphold these values. But it is also particularly important that it have the confidence that its police department upholds these values and reflects them to everyone, those who serve in the department, and those who are served, regardless of race, creed, religion, or ethnicity. Sadly, there have been instances recently that have caused some in our community to question whether our police department is doing enough to uphold these values for everyone. It's a fair question to ask of elected officials. In light of the recent instances that have come before this council, some of you have been here to see that play out. It is a question that those of us who serve in government should never be reluctant to ask of ourselves. In my heart, I have every confidence that our police department and its leadership believe in these values and want to do everything to uphold them. However, what I believe isn't nearly as important as my greater desire to ensure that our community, all individuals and all segments of our community have that same level of confidence. Toward that end, I feel that it is time that we, the city council, the police department, and the community, put on the table and discuss the need to establish a police advisory panel or a police advisory commission. Now, to allay any fears or lessen any expectations, let me just state right here now that this is not a discussion on my part of an L.A. city-style independent authority, but on the other hand, it needs to be a commission with adequate responsibility and authority and structure to be effective in achieving its objectives, among them to ensure that the community and organization feel the police department reflects the values previously mentioned in everything it does. This is not an alternative CPAC, but more of a commission in the nature that we have other commissions in this city, such as GWP Commission, Traffic and Parking Commission, et cetera, where there is a structure for the public to be able to go directly, be heard, have an oral communications, and then make recommendations back to this body, among other, and city staffs will. Now, obviously, this effort will take some time and process, but as those who know me and have observed me, I don't intend to let this be a year-long process. It is important that we get started with deliberate speed, recognizing that it is a very important undertaking, and recognizing that in order to be successful, it, the process, also needs to be grounded on some core values, including that it be a positive process, constructive, open and transparent, and has community consensus behind it. Now, Mr. City Manager, we currently have on schedule a series of study sessions coming up that were sort of organizational, department-overview study sessions, which were to go department by department, so that we can learn about the operations of those departments. I think that is important. As a matter of fact, I asked for that myself. However, I believe that this is more important, it takes greater precedent, and so I believe, rather than delay this, that we take those time slots and put this into study session as soon as possible. I don't recall when the first date for that was. I think it was late this month.
It is the 26th.
The 26th.
It'll be two weeks from today.
And the time slot we were looking at was, I believe, either 10:30 or 11 o'clock to noon.
10:30.
10:30 to noon. Just to conclude, again, I take great pride in this city as a whole, and in the men and women of the Glendale Police Department, as my hope, that the community will accept and support this recommendation and this process in the spirit that it has been developed and continues to develop in our community. I hope that this will be a fair, inclusive, and objective endeavor that in the end will result in a strengthened relationship throughout the community and greater confidence in the Glendale, City of Glendale and its police department. That is the end of my statement. I would like to place that into study sessions as soon as possible. I also want to just add this. I want to make sure, and this is a nuanced point that I'm not sure the public will understand once this filters its way out. I don't know what the support is for such a thing on this council, or one of our council members is missing at the moment. But I think that the first question is not, is not, do we ultimately support an end result? I think we need to support the process to look at this and get started, in partnership with the community, our police department, and our elected officials and city staff. At the end of this process, I can't even tell you whether I will support it, because I don't know what it will be once we get there. But I think we have to be willing to ask ourselves these questions, go through the process, and together, we have to do this. So that is my request, Mr. City Manager. Mr. Yusefian?
I actually didn't have anything else to say until I saw the cartoon.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, respectfully, once again, I will ask, please, next time you do them, leave me out. I hate to say that, the first one was kind of humorous, I actually enjoyed it. The second one, I thought went a little bit too far. This one, I thought it was not called for. I do not, I do not think just because a person belongs to a certain religion, it's appropriate for that individual to make fun of their own religion, especially not in the context in the city. I think if this was done where somebody else did this and brought it up and showed it, we would probably rebuke that person.
Doubt it.
I don't think, I don't think it was appropriate in my mind. If you would like to continue to do that, that's fine, just leave me out.
Mr. Yusefian, point well taken.
Thank you.
I disagree with it completely, and it doesn't make fun of the religion, it simply takes some of the load off of the heaviness of the ethnic debate.
Put a load on me.
But I understand your point.
Thank you.
And it is well taken, and I apologize.
Thank you.
Is there anything else on the main topic?
No, go through.
All right. So we will come back on the 26th? Okay. And we may need some direction, Mr. City Manager, in terms of how we go forward with that from staff, how we organize that. I want to make sure the public is noticed early with this, as early as possible.
We'll put some very general thoughts together relative to process-
That's what I'm-
...for that first meeting.
That's what we need.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. City Clerk, if you would, please, the next item.
Number five is items including minutes following a routine that may be acted upon by one motion, any-
Any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before a motion is proposed.
All right. I, let me just ask, do we have any cards to pull?
Move consent. Second.
Motion is second. Mr. City Clerk.
Councilmembers, Najarian.
Yes.
Montero.
Yes.
Weaver. Usafian.
Eric.
Mayor Draymond.
Yes. Next item, please.
Next item would be oral communications. I will turn that over to you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Um, normally, at this point, we would ask for oral communications from those who voluntarily limit their time to three minutes for the purpose of making, for the purpose of making, uh, uh, public announcements. Now, I currently don't have any cards, um, so we will move on. There's a hand up in the audience, and the gentleman may want to do that, or I'm not sure. So, before we blast on... Well, the question is, is it for a public announcement? Okay, then we will, we'll... Do you have a card in for oral communications?
Yeah.
Okay, fine, very good. All right, um, let us go on to the next item then, please.
Seven is adoption of ordinances. A 7A is ordinance amending section 9.17.030 of the Glendale Municipal Code relating to the solicitation of employment, business contributions, or money or other property regarding public right-of-way anti-solicitation. This was offered on August 5th, 2008 by councilmember Najarian.
We have one speaker card, and that is Richard Espirito. Uh, Mr. Espirito, Dr. Espirito, before we go to you, though, I just want to see whether there's any, uh, comment on the dais or if we have a motion and a second first.
I'll move 7A.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any comment before we go to the public?
I'm sorry.
No, okay. Dr. Espirito. Party.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, and staff. I am Dr. Richard Espirito. Last week, there was some discussion by Mr. Milano regarding the need of this ordinance. I put in a Public Information Request Act back in, uh, the first part of 2007, and I got the reports back. There were a total of 37 calls, uh, from, for the police department at the Home Depot. Twelve of them resulted in arrests, three were trespassing, and five were groups. At the U-Haul, there was a total of three. At, um, Dun &amp; Edwards, there was a total of one. One of the calls that came in, um, this was call number 07120113, um, on January the 20th, 2007, required seven police officers, I don't know why they needed seven police officers, uh, to take care of some day laborers. It resulted in the advisement that they should not be gathering around, uh, the exit areas of the Home Depot. Um, I believe that there is information still available, and I think, uh, you go ahead and pass this ordinance, but I think that the question was stated from the city attorney's office, that there are no records. I have the records, and I'm sure there's more records. And I also looked on the internet, and there is even more information on the internet, the Glendale website, with the Glendale Police Department. Uh, the information that I have gives the time, the calls, uh, the names of the officers, their ID numbers, uh, the citations and what was done. So, I'm sure there is a lot of information regarding this if the city attorneys or the police department would be willing to share it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Espirito. I have no other cards on this topic. Um, we have a motion and a second. Is there any debate? Mr. Usafian.
I have a question. Uh, I'd like to ask the police officer a question. I hate to put you on the spot.
Mr. Officer Zakarian, could you come to the podium and just state your name for the record, please?
I'm Officer Nazakarian.
Thank you. Officer, if I just walk outside right here on Broadway and stopped in the middle of the roadway, and, uh, can you give me a ticket?
Uh, yes, you would be, um-
Obstructing.
-obstructing traffic.
Okay. Uh, so you don't need to have any other law to basically give, give me a citation because I'm obstructing traffic?
That's correct.
Correct. Uh, so whether I am doing this number or trying to wave somebody down makes no difference. Just standing there is enough for me to obstruct traffic, and you can just give me a citation.
Correct. Obstruct, obstructing traffic.
Thank you.
Did you have anything more for the officer?
Uh, no, that was the question I wanted to know. No, thank you very much.
Thank you, Officer Zakarian.
Um, I asked that question because that's basically what this ordinance does. I wasn't here last week when this was being debated. I originally opposed this ordinance. It was a lot more broader than this. I opposed it because in several states, their court, constitutional court, was deemed it unconstitutional and struck it down. We spent several years spending staff time trying to fight this. We lost in one court. We were going to go to another court, and this is the compromise. The compromise is, is no person shall stand on any street, roadway, curb, or highway that is within an immediate adjacent to an industrial or commercial zone within the city or solicit employment, business, or contribution of money or other properties from the occupant of any vehicle, uh, that is traveling upon any public street roadway. Guess what? You can't do that now. You can't even just stand there. What comes to asking for anything? Yet, we just don't know when to say, okay, you know what? We tried to introduce an ordinance. It was not a good one. Most states found it unconstitutional. It looks like it may be unconstitutional. Just give it up. No? We're going to write one basically mimicking what we already have. That's one of the reasons I opposed it in closed session. I oppose mo- mo- spending money on this ordinance, and I will oppose it again because it is a superfluous law. It's already exists. You just keep repeating it over and over again. It doesn't give you any more thing. And as the news press said, which is accurate, this ordinance will not change one thing in Home Depot. You still see people standing on the sidewalk. You still see them asking for work, and not going to change anything. That's my piece.
Okay. Mr. Najarian.
Well, there's one important difference here, and that is, Mr. Usafian, you can stand on the curb right now and solicit work. Uh, without this ordinance, uh, it is perfectly legal, and that's what we're trying to prohibit, is the day, uh, laborers from standing on the curb, uh, leaning over into the traffic lanes, soliciting work. And this was, I mean, the legal background that you cited, I think, was rather cursory. Uh, we do have the attorney here, uh, Ms. Mar, to go through it, but I don't think that's necessary. This just isn't saying you can't stand in the middle of the street and ask for work. It really targets the issue that we had in Glendale, and that was these laborers standing on the curb, uh, leaning over. Uh, what this ordinance does is it backs them off.
The curb is only six inches, six inches. So, you put your foot behind that six inches, and you still do this. Anyway, I'm not going to belabor it. I think I made my point. And after this is passed, you can go to Home Depot in about two months, and you will see if there's any change. I tend to contend, there will be no change until the Supreme Court makes a different decision. Then, maybe we can make some laws, but currently, we can't. And that's not a law I made, that's the law that the Supreme Court of the land has made a decision on. So...
Okay. Do we have any other comments? Uh, Mr. City Attorney.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, members of council, I just want to respond briefly to Mr. Espirito's comment. Uh, Mr. Howard stated this last week, but I guess, I think it's worth repeating. Uh, the, the documents that Mr. Milano requested were for a period when the city was not enforcing the ordinance because we were in injunction, and that's why we did not have statistics about, um, citations and arrests under the ordinance. Um, it's different from the, the rest record, citations that we have when we were actually enforcing the ordinance and before we actually had an ordinance to enforce. So, there is a distinction. I just wanted to highlight it again.
Very good. Okay. Anything else? No. Mr. City Clerk.
Councilmembers Najarian.
Yes.
Montero.
Yes.
Weaver. Usafian.
No.
Mayor Draymond.
Yes. All right, next item, please. Well, actually, before we go on, um, we do have one other item that was not submitted as a, as a request for, uh, for, uh, our presentation segment, but, uh, under the, uh, the three-minute announcements, but I'm handed a note that, about it, and I think it's of, uh, general interest to the council and the public especially. So, let me take a moment and go back to that, uh, and that is about Relay for Life.
Mayor Draymond, members of the council, um, I'm Dave Ahern, and with me is one of the chairs of Relay for Life, whether she likes it or not, Linda Patrick. I'm sorry we got our wires crossed on turning in-
That's-
...in those things. Um, as you know, Relay for Life is set to occur on September 27th and 28th, and we know the council members will want to participate. Uh, for your camp, we've brought you your camp starter kit. You have, all have flags now for your camp. We'll continue to bring you accoutrements to, uh, accenture your camps. I know Mr. Starbird has them all already, but we'll, we'll work on getting a few things that he may not own as, as well. Relay, uh, is in its fifth year here in Glendale. Um, last year, we raised about $190,000 and had, um, about 1,000 participants. So, it's really, uh, becoming one of those, um, events that truly is a Glendale event. This year's event will be held at Shaw Canyon Ballfields. Um, there's another, uh, or a number of other events that go along with it, leading up to it, fundraising events. Uh, September 12th is an event, Popcorn and Pearls. Uh, September 17th, the Alex, the Alex Theater. Are we losing the councilman?
I don't think it's anything you're announcing. I think it's, uh-
Uh, September 17th at 7:30 at the Alex Theater, the Downtown Merchants are hosting the, the playing of Hoosiers as a fundraiser for their relay team. And then September 19th, we will be raffling off a night on the town with Mayor Draymond. Um, dinner will be at Gennaro's for four, uh, so we have a sponsor for that, and we continue to work on other venues and festivities to go with that. Mr. Mayor, so I, I think that's, that covers it?
I thought, uh, Channel 6 was going to play a-
I believe they have a, uh, a brief something, I was told.
Brief video.
Brief video.
Hey.
And I'll say it's one day, one night, one community, one fight.
I was having some problems with my throat, and I had some ulcers on my throat. He stopped in the doorframe, turned around, and says, "Let me examine you, give you a complete physical." Soon as he touched my neck, he knew. Uh, I did my physical biopsies, and sure enough, the results came back that I had thyroid cancer. I didn't know my life had changed at that moment, but everybody else around me knew.
My sister Debbie was my older sister. She was carrying her, her third child when she got diagnosed with cancer, and unfortunately, it was only a six-week battle. We had plenty of fights as kids, but this fight was just one that was too much for her. She gave birth to a premature baby who's also running around here somewhere as a nine-year-old, so we consider him our last gift from her.
First time I heard the words, "You have cancer," I was with my mother, who was so precious to me, and, um, the very day that she was diagnosed with cancer was the day that I pretty much lost hope because I've, I've always been able to protect her, and when this disease came along, I felt hopeless because I couldn't.
Relay for me has been a, actually, a source of healing. It's an event that has allowed me to get rid of some sadness and, and turn it into an energy source to, to have fun and do good things at the same time.
This disease can conquer, but the truth is, with the community that gets involved in Relay for Life, just a mere grassroots effort, that we can conquer this disease.
At the start of each relay is the powerful survivor's lap.
We have a picture, um, on our mantle. It's a picture of my first survivor lap, and it's me smiling, and, um... I have to say, five most important pictures of my life.
As darkness falls, the lights of luminarias shine in honor of those battling cancer and a memory of those lost.
Cancer. I invite you to come, join the fight, pick up a flag, and let's fight back.
Relay for Life. Celebrate. Remember.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Don't forget the date, folks. It's September 27th, 28th, Saturday and Sunday.
Thank you, and, and, again, you guys are in our hearts for supporting us every year. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Bye.
And likewise. Okay. Mr. City Clerk, can you bring us back to where we left off, please?
Item number eight, which is actually items, a 8A is City Treasurer regarding City Treasurer's annual investment report. Day 1 is a motion accepting report for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2008.
Okay, thank you. I do have one speaker card, but, uh, before we go to the public, um, let us go to our City Treasurer.
Sure.
Mr. Baruchy.
There we go. Wait. Go back.
Mayor Draymond, City Councilman. Pleased to be here for the annual reading of the...
Yes.
All of a sudden, I find a very somber tone in these hallowed halls here.
Yes, well, I don't think that's related to you.
[laughing]
I think you are very welcome here, sir.
Uh, let me begin by, um, perhaps reviewing some of the financial-
Mayor Draymond, City Councilman. Pleased to be here for the annual reading of the...
Yes.
All of a sudden, I find a very somber tone in these hallowed halls here.
Yes, well, I don't think that's related to you.
[laughing]
I think you are very welcome here, sir.
Let me begin by perhaps reviewing some of the financial highlights of the past year as a backdrop to the performance numbers, the key statistics for the city portfolio. As we recall, we don't have to search back that far. The financial headlines saw a deepening housing recession finally seeping into the broader economy, record-smashing energy prices, and ever-escalating food prices, distressed liquidity in credit markets, and a weakening job market. Did we have nothing but bad news? No, we did have some good news, but the good news was correcting the bad news. We had the Fed took corrective action to stabilize the liquidity crisis by directing the Bear Stearns buyout. And then we had the U.S. Treasury acting to stabilize the housing markets by shoring up Fannie Mae and Freddie Mac. All in all, it was a difficult year for the economy and the financial markets. The Fed lowered interest rates seven times during the fiscal year by 325 basis points. That's 3 and 1/4 percent. From a Fed funds rate of 5 and 1/4 at the beginning of the year to 2% at the end of the year. Despite all this, the city portfolio soldiered through. And let's kind of take a look at some of the numbers. What we have here in Exhibit A are some of the key statistics that I've pulled out. The first item is the size of the portfolio. This is comparing the portfolio to last year, June of '07 fiscal year ending 2007, and the year before that. We've seen a drop of almost $15 million in the portfolio through the year. Because of what we saw in the marketplace, we saw interest earnings increase, but ever-so-slightly, by about $600,000 from $18.8 million through fiscal year 2007 to $19,400,000 for this past fiscal year. We did see a rate of return, our yield on the portfolio, increase to 4.17 percent. That's an increase of, let's see what's that come out to, about 27 basis points. Again, a modest increase, but at least we're moving in the right direction there. And the weighted average maturity or the average life of the portfolio moved up to slightly under two years, up from, oh, 14 months, which would be the average life of a year ago. If we look at Exhibit B, we've got the yield comparisons of the city portfolio. As we indicated, the portfolio moved up 27 basis points. We're looking at LAITH, and LAITH for our viewers in TV land is the State Pool, the local agency investment fund, which is used as a benchmark by many municipalities throughout the state. In the last half of fiscal year, the treasury yield curve straightened out and then normalized from the inverted yield curve that was in place for almost two years. And many of you recall scintillating conversations about that dreaded inverted yield curve. Now, this normalization of the yield curve helps explain the rapid drop in the rate of return during the second half of the year for the State Pool, this local agency investment fund. However, LAITH was still able to end the year averaging 4.37 percent, although it did drop 74 basis points over the year from the previous year. The two-year treasuries, just to show how volatile the marketplace was, the two-year treasuries averaged for the previous year 4.75, 4 and 3/4 percent. This is the two-year treasuries. This past year, they averaged 2.95 percent. This is the marketplace that we've been dealing with. Let's take a look at our asset allocation. We indicated that this shows where the city dollars are invested. The pie for June of ending 2008, we indicated was 14 and 1/2 or $15 million, smaller than the year-end before. The composition of the holdings, though, hasn't changed that much. We have most of our long-term investments in federal agency collables, federal agency notes, and in corporate notes. All of those combined, the purple area, the green pie wedge, and the blue piece of pie, put together represent about 72 percent of the portfolio. All the remaining wedges represent the short end of the portfolio, about 28 percent. Looking at Exhibit D, this kind of shows the liquidity position of the portfolio. We can see the maturity schedule laddered out over five years. This is our investment area, one to five years. We can see that we've got about a third of our portfolio maturing within one year. That roughly represents about $150, $155 million. We've got another 25 percent or $115 million coming due within two years, and another 25 percent in three years. And we can see how effectively that translates to the average life of the portfolio of slightly under two years. Exhibit E kind of shows the total dollars that the city treasury is responsible for as of the close of business on June 30th, 2008. The portfolio had $469 million in it. The treasurer, if you will, has lent out $2 million to GWP for their natural gas trading program. And we have cash on hand in bank accounts representing a little over $6 million. So total investments in cash, year-end, June 30th of 2008, of $477 million and change. That compares to $490 million at year-end the prior year. And our final slide, during the year, GWP did go out with a couple of bond offerings, and the city treasurer is charged with responsibility of investing those bond proceeds, both for the electric issue and for the water issue. And this represents the outstanding dollars in the bond proceed accounts as of June 30th, 2008. And most of those dollars should probably be gone by next year's report. So that pretty much concludes my report. I'd like to just take a couple of seconds to talk about the coming year. The economy is expected to struggle through the end of the calendar year. We expect the Fed to keep rates where they are through the end of the calendar year in order to allow a sense of normalcy to return to the marketplace. I'd like to say for, as far as the city portfolio is concerned, we will continue to monitor financial news and market conditions to take advantage of opportunities for the portfolio. And for the folk out there with the barrage of troubling financial news seemingly a daily event, we are pleased to note that the composition of the portfolio is sound, and the portfolio is very safe and very liquid.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor, that is my report.
Thank you, Treasurer Baruchy. Let me ask if there are questions or comments before we go to our speaker, Mr. Usayvi, followed by Mr. Ahern.
Mr. Baruchy, thank you for your report. Very comprehensive. Question on that last slide, you showed a $2 million natural gas trading program...
Yes.
...in June 30, 2007, and then again on June 30, 2008. Is that the same $2 million as the new $2 million?
Same $2 million.
Okay, thank you.
It does not reflect, by the way, the performance of what that $2 million represents. What I understand is...
You borrowed.
I'm simply accounting for the fact that they're holding $2 million of our dollars.
Right.
Okay. Councilmember Ahern.
Thank you, Mr. Baruchy. With the $6 million or so that you show we have as cash on hand...
Yes.
Do you think that's excessive and that maybe can be placed in very short-term investments, CDs or whatnot?
No, that represents the total dollars on that particular day. And where we are at the end of June, it's usually we're closing out books. So we usually have a lot of outstanding checks. So as far as it being...
These are money that has not been...
We are paying vendors. We're paying bills, closing our books. So usually, plus payroll items there, but effectively, it usually goes a little higher at the close of the year-end.
Okay.
I don't know that $6 million is a big sum. We don't consider that a large number. It's usually anywhere from 3 and 1/2 to 5 and 1/2. And the dollars are there to basically not only take care of the outstanding bills and payroll items, but also take care of bank service charges.
With regard to our investment makeup...
Yes.
Do we, and there's been obviously a lot of shakeup in the financial industry, do we have any notes from any of those troubled companies, the Fannie Mays or the Indy Macs? Any corporate notes from any of those type of institutions?
We do hold paper for Fannie Mae and Freddie Mac, yes.
What does that mean for us when they run into trouble?
Means nothing since they have been given a clean bill of health in the fact that the treasury or the government has come back...
Bail them out.
Well, to shore them up. Not going to say bail them out, but they have shored them up. So therefore, Fannie Mae just got a, re-rated just yesterday, and got their AAA intact.
Were you scared?
Never, never.
You knew the government was going to come in and shore it up?
I was concerned, but not scared. I don't get paid to get scared.
Okay. DEFCON 3 then.
Let's put it this way, I feel a lot more comfortable today than I did when Indy Mac and there was a lot of talk about bank failures.
Thank you.
Mr. Council. Councilmember Quinter, thanks.
Mr. Baruchy, since '07, you increased your commercial paper and your corporate notes. What generally are we getting for return on those instruments?
You were talking about the corporate notes?
Yeah, the corporate...
The corporate notes we have with Toyota, we have paper with Bank of America, which are, Toyota's a AAA. Let me just take a look here and tell you specifically what the returns are. Bank of America, that's a return of 5.39.
You normally give us the breakdown. I don't know if...
Yeah.
You get it in your monthly report.
You're going to get it next...
Yeah, and for some reason, I thought we were going to also include it in this one and repeat it. It must be a breakdown in communication.
So you've increased the percentage from 3% in '07 to 12% in '08. You've increased the percentage on the commercial paper and the corporate notes.
Not to, I don't know that I did it up to 12... Oh, you're adding commercial paper and corporate notes?
Right.
I don't look at those being the same thing. The corporate notes are long-term. Again, as I was describing our holdings, on corporate notes, we could have up to 15 percent of our portfolio. And I think we're sitting at whatever the little slice of pie is, 4 or 5 percent. Right now, it's very difficult to buy corporate paper because it doesn't yield anything, and you'd be surprised, but not, well, they've got enough problems. They're really looking for an infusion of new capital, most of those banks.
All right, thank you. We do have one speaker card, if there's nothing else from the council. Barry Allen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome.
Council, staff, and the public. Just a couple of things that I would like some clarification on. One is the fact that the investment portfolio, as you mentioned, dropped about $14.5 million between June '07 and June '08. Why was there that drop? Why didn't we have that money in the portfolio? Was the money not available? I know I've heard one of the council members say we have, you know, half a billion dollars to invest, and yet I see that number is down. And when we look at the same issue regarding the cash and total, the investment portfolio at par and the total of cash, that as well has dropped down about, what's that, $13 million?
I think that's the same number, though.
Okay, it's the same number. It's understood.
Right.
What happened to that $13 or $14 million? Where did it go?
Where did it go? It was spent.
It was spent, okay. So we have spent down, so you don't have the amount of money to invest that you had the year before.
That is correct. The city treasurer doesn't spend money. The city treasurer invests the money.
Well, that is good. Now, you had about $78 million to invest from two bonds. I don't recall if that was the exact money that came in.
Uh-huh.
Does anyone know how much that, those bonds will cost the city, the taxpayer, over the life of them? Does anybody have that number? I know that you and I spoke about the projection for a year-to-year basis...
Right.
...of what has to be allocated to be able to cover that.
Yes, usually those numbers are either developed by the finance department or by the investment banker assisting the finance department.
Okay, now, I guess the question to the city would be, if we add up what Mr. Baruchy can get from the investment, will that balance out what we're paying in interest over the next, I don't know, 30, 40, 50 years, whatever it may be? I think that would be the big question. And I doubt that anybody can give an answer to that now. But I would appreciate it at some point in the future. Thank you.
Let me go to the city manager, who had his hand up.
Yes.
Mr. Baruchy and then Mr. Usayvi.
Let me try both questions. Number one, the reduction in investment portfolio in all likelihood is due to capital expenditures. Our project can be multiple years, but the intent is to spend down capital funds. In all likelihood, it's due to capital expenditures, I would anticipate. And over the life of the bonds, bonds are issued frankly to be spent, not to be invested. In fact, you can't sell tax-exempt bonds just to invest the money. It's illegal under IRS regulations. In this case, of course, with respect to GWP, the bonds are sold to invest in infrastructure. But the rate on tax-exempt bonds is relatively low. I think it still, however, does exceed the interest earnings that we have in our portfolio. The utility bonds are about 4 and 1/2 percent, which is still a very good borrowing rate. But your portfolio is in the neighborhood of approaching 4 at this point. But again, these funds don't sit there. They're used as quickly as we can. They'll earn interest in the meantime, but for the most part, they're issued for the purpose of investing in infrastructure.
Mr. Baruchy.
Yeah, and I would, I think Jim has said it all. I would be parroting it, except the fact that council makes decisions that, as far as directing the bond effort and the reason for going to bond, that this would be an investment other than an investment in the investment portfolio. So the money is taken out from here and put to good use for quality of life or infrastructure. And that's where it would go. What you're talking about are the dollars and cents, and from that perspective, and they're really two separate issues, though. I mean, you've got an immediate need compared against something, you're just building up dollars for eventualities.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Baruchy. Thank you, Mr. Allen. All right. Thank you, Mr. Baruchy. Thank you, Mr. Allen. That's right. Don't go too far, because I think you're the next one up on the next item. So save you the walk. Yep. Mr. Yusefian.
Move the item.
Oh.
Second.
All right. Is there any other discussion? Mr. Seigler?
Councilmembers, Najarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Draymond?
Yes. Okay. Let's go to the next item, please.
B is City Treasurer regarding city investment policy for fiscal year 2008, 2009. And B1 is a resolution adopting the investment policy.
Move the item.
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion? We have no speaker cards, so let's call the roll.
Councilmembers Najarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Draymond?
Yes. Next item, please.
A C is Director of Human Resources regarding proposed ordinance for introduction, amending the salary ordinance for certain officers, subordinate officers, assistants, deputies, clerks, and employees of the city of Glendale for their compensation to add budget administrator classification. And C1 is an ordinance for introduction, GMA exempt classification, establishment of a budget administrator classification.
Okay. Thank you very much. I assume we're going to Matt Doyle.
Yes, let me ask Matt to comment briefly on this, but I'll make a couple of supplemental comments before he does. I had requested during the budget process that we move forward with consideration of creating a budget administrator position. In this case, our plan is to take an existing position and reclassify it to an administrator level position to really focus all year long on the budget. Our budget, what you see is mostly the preparation, which is all the activity at the beginning of a year, as we end a year and start a new year. There's a great deal of management that's needed throughout the course of the year, both in the areas of revenues and expenditures. And in having gone through this last budget cycle, my view is we just need to give more attention to the management of that process. This actually creates the classification, which is necessary before we can come to you with a budget amount. I would expect taking an existing vacancy, adding an additional salary component to it, the neighborhood of $25,000 or $30,000 in additional cost, I think annually, to elevate it to an administrator slot to really provide more oversight of the budget process.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Yusefian?
I was going to actually move the item until Mr. Starbuck said a few words on the end, which is, my staff report says fiscal impact none.
There's no fiscal impact from creating a classification because it hasn't been filled yet. The fiscal impact comes from actually then doing a recruitment and filling it. It would likely be an in-house promotional process, but creating a classification doesn't create a fiscal impact. This is just creating a classification.
I think that basically the logical comment, or the logical progression of that is ultimately there would be something coming back, obviously would show.
And that's why I mentioned the additional cost, because it wasn't in the staff report. That's only because this is just creating a classification.
All right. Mr. Doyle, did you have anything to add before we hear from the public?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, no, I have nothing to add, other than, as Mr. Starbuck says, the action tonight is just to amend the salary ordinance to include this new classification in there. At some point, we will meet with the Civil Service Commission, develop a job description, and then figure out a way of filling this position.
Okay. Thank you very much. Do we have any council comments before we go to our speakers?
I do, Mr. Mayor. So, Mr. Starbuck or Mr. Doyle, let me just be clear on this. We will be creating a new position. This action tonight does not have a fiscal impact. However, when it's filled, there will be a fiscal impact.
Mm-hmm.
So we're not just reclassifying one job or more than one job, current job, and shuffling around and putting the duties into a new title of budget administrator. This is a new hire, will be a new hire for the city, increasing our FTEs by...
No, actually, it wouldn't be increasing the FTEs. That's why my explanation was I thought we needed, even the staff report says no fiscal impact. We will take an existing authorized budgeted position and essentially delete it and create a new one. So the cost is just the incremental amount.
And that'll be an executive level position, or...
Would be a management level, administrator level. Right. Not an executive. Would answer to the Director of Finance.
Mr. Yusefian?
Could we have that segment of it come back next week when this is up? This is just an ordinance, so it can be introduced. And then next week, when it's time for it to be adopted, so then we could see where the money comes from and where it goes? I feel more comfortable. And I'll tell you, my main concern is that we went through a rigorous exercise of eliminating positions and so on and so forth. Now we go back and create another one. I'm very inky about that. So if there's a way, when you come back, to show which position you reclassified and modified, and where the money comes from, and there's no additional money, then I feel more comfortable with that.
We can do that. And again, our intent was to keep the cost as low as possible. That's why we've used an existing vacancy. In the long run, I assure you, this is going to save and/or generate more than the position will ever cost us.
All right. That's my feeling exactly. I think that this position is going to have a person and maybe even some additional staff focused on the budget. So we are going to, at the bare minimum, have quarterly, hopefully even monthly, a monthly awareness of where the budget is at any given time.
Exactly.
And what savings we can apply to other programs, and so I think it's a good idea.
All right. Let's hear what the public has to say. Mr. Allen, Barry Allen, followed by Mike Mohill.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome.
Council, staff. Thank you for some of that clarification. It looks like we're just going to be moving around positions, and I think that if we see that there's a change, and I know we're going to be looking at some severe losses of revenue, I know the car dealers are hurting significantly, and as the property values are reassessed, we're going to see some major changes. But I would certainly hope that Councilmember Quintero is correct, that we can see monthly or quarterly figures, so we know what is actually happening. But one of the things that kind of confused me is that the staff report gave you a salary schedule. It was last year's. This is dated June of '08, right? Your New Year started July 1 of '08 with a brand-new salary schedule. So the information that you've been given, at this point, is inaccurate, and you should request, if anything, the salary schedule that is presently on the website. I think that's important. And I think the other thing to bolster what Mr. Quintero was saying is that the job description, who I guess will be, that will be set between Mr. Doyle and the Civil Service Commission, is all-important. Otherwise, you won't get those monthly or quarterly reports, and you won't know what is going to be required and what we're going to see from this new position. Thank you. Barry Allen.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Mike Mohill?
Mayor Draymond, City Councilman, Mike Mohill. I'd only make a comment on this item of human resources. Mr. Barry Allen more or less said what I wanted to say. As far as accountability, we're in tough times right now. We don't need to go ahead and start creating new positions and new salaries and more pensions. We forget that every time you add a civil servant to the payroll, it's not just one civil servant. It's another one, because at the end of the day, we're going to have to pay that gentleman a pension. I also like to thank Barry for mentioning the fact that the information that the council was given was last year's information, not this year's. Thank you, Barry, for being the sixth councilman for the city of Glendale.
Tonight, it's fifth. We're missing one tonight, so I think it's five.
I don't think we're missing anybody.
Mr. City Manager?
In spite of the run date that's on the last page, this is the salary schedule in effect for the current fiscal year.
Okay.
So it's not an error. Correct, Mr. Doyle?
Okay. Well, thank you. All right. That is our only, the only two speakers on this item. Do I have any...
But that'll introduce the ordinance.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Yusefian. As long as there is consensus on that, we don't need a vote. Just introducing the ordinance.
Right. But he's coming back with some more information next week for adoption.
All right. I think we're at 8D.
8D is Director of Human Resources regarding proposed ordinance of the city of Glendale providing for a salary supplement and continuation of certain benefits for city employees who are members of the National Guard or Armed Forces Reserves and are called up for active duty. This is an ordinance for introduction.
Okay.
Mayor, I just have one question. How many people do we still have out?
Mr. Doyle?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, there are currently two employees away from work duty.
Do you know when they'll be coming back?
Let's see. We have, there's actually four total in different transition. There are two away currently. By the way, these are all police officers. One will be leaving very soon to go to some training, and then we anticipate be sent to Iraq sometime in February. And there's another who just returned, actually today, from a stint away from the workforce. But the number's two. And typically, throughout the course of the year, we'll have several come and go at various points, but it's...
Are these individuals going there voluntarily, or they're being asked to go because they're part of the reserve?
These are people who have enlisted as either Armed Forces Reserve or National Guard, who are in fact being required to go. They're given orders, and they must follow them.
Mr. I'm sorry.
Also introduce the ordinance.
And Mr. Najarian?
So, brief question. Mr. Doyle, during their tour of duty, are those months, years counted towards their time with the city?
Yes. It counts towards their overall service time.
Okay. Mr. Quintero, anything?
Just a comment and say this is the least we can do for these individuals that wind up serving on active duty. All it means is that they're getting their salary while they're in the Armed Forces, and specifically when they're overseas in this case.
That's correct. It's actually the difference between what their military pay is and what their ordinary base salary would be as employees. So it's actually a calculation that has to be done to essentially make them whole and make sure that their families continue to be supported and have the income to live.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Doyle. We have one speaker, Mike Mohill.
Mayor Draymond, Councilman, Mike Mohill, resident of Glendale, 30-plus years. I'd like to thank the council for making recognition to our armed service personnel. I thank you, Mr. Najarian, making comment, asking, is their salary being made full? That's a great. I even think we ought to go an extra step for these gentlemen. After all, they're making it possible for me to come up here and to disagree with you. Without them being out there, putting their lives on the line, their life on the line for you, me, and everybody in the audience, I think we ought to do more than just make it equal. I think they ought to get a bonus. What that bonus would be, I have no idea. That would be up to you, gentlemen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mohill. We do have one more speaker card. Evelyn Hansen on 8D.
Thank you, Evelyn Hansen, resident of Glendale. We were just told that this ordinance is going to make up the difference between their military pay and their civilian pay when they were working in Glendale. Does that take into account the basic allotment for quarters and any separate routes they might get? When I was in the military in, wow, way back when the dinosaurs roamed the earth, in '83 to '87, I got $700 to $700 a month basic allotment for quarters for my family, housing for my family. So I imagine it significantly more by now. So I do have that question. If it takes into these other things, and how we know that's what they're getting? They get a leave and earnings statement, an LES that tells that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hansen. Do we have an answer for that?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I believe we're dealing basically with base salaries comparing to their military pay and their city salary. I do not believe it includes any housing allotment.
All right. Thank you. I have no other speaker cards for item 8D. It's been moved, but we, it's been introduced.
It's been introduced.
Mr. Yusefian, he's on. All right. Go on.
8E.
8E.
8E is Director of Public Works regarding report on single-use plastic carryout bag reduction. And 81 is a resolution joining the Los Angeles County Single Use Bag Reduction and Recycling Program.
Okay. Thank you. We do have one speaker card, so we will get to that in a moment. Let me see if there is any discussion before we go to the public. Who is covering this item? Would that be you, Mr. Zern?
Yes, sir.
I think that's Steve Zern, anyway.
That's me, yes.
Well, he's a little bit incognito tonight, folks.
I'm having a hard time recognizing him.
Yes. Mr. Zern?
Mr. Mayor, members of the...
Talk to us about plastic.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, at the request of Mr. Yusefian, that we bring back this issue to discuss the overall management of plastic bags and the impact that it has, following in the footsteps of several other agencies, which have begun to address this issue. We've put together a pretty comprehensive report for you that covers from a world level all the way down to a local level, and I won't go through that. I'll simply hit the high points, which, what this impact is to the city of Glendale. There are 6 billion of these plastic bags that are consumed each year in LA County. That's about 25% of the waste. That is significant. For us here, it poses a number of problems. Mr. Engel, Neighborhood Services Administrator, says that this is the number-one source of windblown litter in the city, that he has to deal with and that he deals with in his various Clean and Beautiful and his other programs. For us at the landfill, without question, it is the number-one issue from two perspectives. One is, if the bags, if we're able to cover the bags and get them buried, it takes them some hundred-plus years to break down. And the part of that that is a little bit troubling is, when they break down, they may in fact break down into something that is even more toxic than the original bag itself. The component parts, the chemical component parts, can break down and get into the water table at that rate. They are also the number-one source of windblown litter at the landfill, without question. These also get into our stormwater stream and our wastewater stream, primarily stormwater, which are carried out through our conveyance systems and eventually get out to our waterways, the ocean primarily. But as you had seen in the report, there is quite an impact to the marine life from these bags. Again, you have a review of some of the actions that a number of agencies have taken. We here in Glendale are fortunate enough to have LA County taking the lead in a county-wide effort. They've notified us and asked us for our support. The 88 cities in LA County banding together as a force to address this issue, primarily to promote reusable bags, and that being the ultimate goal, which would be through the use of reusable bags to eliminate the use of the plastic bags, but at the same time realizing that there's a reality to reduction and the rate of reduction, is to increase the recycling of the bags. And these bags can be recycled. We recycle them at our recycling center. There is a market for them to be recycled. It's a matter of getting them in to that recycling stream. Reduce the overall usage of plastic carryout bags in favor of other materials. There's also a movement to try to get the bag, to change the composition of the bags, to use a more environmentally-friendly material or recycled content. Also, a good thing, but ultimately, it still is a lightweight bag that blows. But again, it's a step in the right direction. Most importantly, probably the biggest issue is a massive promotion, massive public outreach to people about how important it is for them to recycle these bags if they intend to use them, or better yet, to use an alternative, a reusable bag, and reduce the overall waste stream that makes up, that these plastic bags make up. We have representatives from the county with us to talk about their program. We're recommending to you, as at least a first step, that we join the county in their efforts. Another advantage of the 88 cities or coming together is the county, is that we can also try to influence legislation at the state level to address some of these bags, some of the issues related to plastic bags, and hopefully address the issue overall, as it is not just something that affects us here in Glendale or LA County, but worldwide, as you can see from our report. So we're prepared to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Zern. Let me first go to my colleagues and see if there are any comments, questions, or otherwise. Mr. Najarian?
Mr. Zern, you mentioned that the bags are recycled. Can we place those in our gray recycle bins that are picked up everywhere?
Yes, you can. Yes, you can, Mr. Najarian. And we, that is something with our, as you're aware, we recently, within the last year and a half, hired a new contractor to run our recycling center, and they've greatly expanded the materials that we take at the center, including plastic bags. But yes, absolutely, you can put those in your container.
Okay. Anything else? Mr. Quintero?
I think this is a good idea at many levels. And what I found interesting, in the past couple of weeks, I've been asking the people at Ralph's, the checkout people, what percentage of the shoppers... at Ralphs, the checkout people, what percentage of the shoppers are going for plastic bags? And individually, unless they were coached by the Ralphs company, they all said eighty percent. They all said eighty percent. So, it's obvious that the bulk of the population prefers plastic bags, but we've got to head in a different direction. I'm glad the city of L.A. has done their, passed their law, the county of L.A. is involved, so I think this is the appropriate thing to do.
And just a note on that, Mr. Quintero, there's a lot of that may be a lack of education is why people are choosing that. And kudos to the Ralph Corporation. My understanding is that they began to offer a ten cent per bag credit on your bill if you bring a reusable bag or reusable bags for your groceries. So, if you bring ten bags, for instance, they'll give you a dollar credit as an incentive.
No one mentioned that. It's interesting that they have that program.
It's low-key.
Birds don't know about it.
They want to sell you the bags.
All right. Very good. We have one speaker, Nancy Kent.
Nancy Kent, resident of Glendale. It is great that this is on your agenda, and I would like to thank Councilman Yusefian for asking that this be agendized. The staff report for this said that the single-use plastic bags used in the USA every year require twelve million barrels of oil to produce them, and that was according to the Wall Street Journal. That's a very unwise use of this resource. And Mr. Zern has already explained many reasons why this is needed. I would like the Glendale City Council to take even stronger and faster action to decrease these bags than this Los Angeles County plan, but it's wonderful that this is moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kent. Okay. Are there any, Mr. Yusefian?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think, Steve, you did this twice, actually. There was another time that this item had come back to the council, but at that time there was some kind of litigation that was taking place between San Francisco, who had banned this, and so we decided to kind of wait and see attitude to an extent. So, just a few comments as far as education is concerned, which I, by the way, this is a great packet. I don't know who did this, but they did a fantastic job at it. Plastic bags do not biodegrade, but they photodegrade, which is different. They basically have to stay under sun and then they break down. One thing that Mr. Zern made an error, it says a hundred years. It's actually in the staff report, it says it takes a thousand years for it to compose completely. Just to let you know that we are not the first ones on the planet to do this. Plastic bags are banned already in China, Rwanda, Zanzibar, the French islands of Corsica, Bhutan, and Bangladesh, western state of India, South Africa, Mambia. London, England, plans to ban ultra-thin plastic bags from 2009 and tax the others. French and Italy will ban plastic bags in 2010. South Australia and western parts of Canada are also phasing out the usage of plastic bags by imposing aggressive measures. I don't know how many of you watch Channel Seven in the morning, the early show, you know, morning show. There was a piece several days ago out of Galveston, Texas, showing all these plastic bags and other kinds of plastic that is in the ocean and how it's breaking down. It is getting to a point that it is breaking down to smaller pieces to an extent that now the fish are eating it, because it's edible now. Fish are eating it, birds are eating it, and they're dying because they cannot digest it. You can't get any nutrition out of it, but it is bulky and takes room in your stomach, and we're starting to lose a big chunk of our fishing industry in Galveston because of this. So, it's not just something that we do in Southern California. I think it's something that we need to start dealing with worldwide and might as well just start in here. So, and also to Nancy, I did read the report, and I was originally thinking about doing what San Francisco does, which is just ban it right out, but as I read the ordinance further and further and further, it became apparent that I'm going to do what the staff said, which is the practical option for the city of Glendale is to take advantage of the county of Los Angeles' single-use bag reduction. So, I'll be practical this time. But it doesn't mean that. I think it's one of those things, you take a step, and then eventually we'll get to a point that we will stop using these things, but we've got to take the first step. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Yusefian. And I wish Mr. Burukey were still here so we could see if we're invested in Zanzibarian plastic bags, but I'm thinking, no.
Oh, they banned it.
They banned it? We better not be invested in Zanzibarian plastic bags.
Better not.
All right. If there's no other discussion.
Mr. Mayor, I'm just --
Yes, Mr. Zern?
I could. This is, and I don't think I was clear on this, this is really what we're looking at a first step. We're hoping that this solves the situation. Here in Glendale, if we don't think this is effective enough, we'll be back to you to discuss it, how successful it's been, and whether or not we need to take a more giant step forward in dealing with this.
Like most cities have done in the past.
Right. And also, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention Alina, Ms. Morschidian, from my office, who's out here. She is responsible for this report. She raised her hand or stood.
Stand up and take a bow. Ah, all right. Good job.
Bravo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're very welcome. Thank you, Mr. Zern, and --
I'd like to move the items, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. City Clerk?
Councilmembers Najarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Aye.
Mayor Draymond?
Yes. Okay, let's move on to the next item, please.
At 8F is Director of Public Works Regarding Adoption of City of Glendale Flood Plane Management Ordinance. At F is an ordinance for introduction.
Cards?
No cards.
Introduce the ordinance.
Okay. Another comment from my colleagues? Nope. All right. Mr. City Clerk?
At nine, under hearings, at nine A is Director Applying Regarding Appeal on Tentative Parcel Map Number GLN-1623 Located at Thirty-Five Twenty-Five Altura Avenue. At nine A one is a motion to take off calendar.
So moved. Aye.
You have a motion and a second?
Councilmembers Najarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Aye.
Mayor Draymond?
Yes.
All right. Next item, please.
Mr. Mayor and council, we now return to oral communications. Discussion is limited to items not part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to a speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. City manager, mayor, further matter to the appropriate department for an investigation and a report.
Okay. Thank you. The one thing I need are the cards. Thank you. Well, in truth, I could guess on some of them, but, okay. Dr. Richard Espirito, followed by Margaret Hammond.
Members of the city council and staff, I am Dr. Richard Espirito. I wanted to say something, not regarding this particular PowerPoint presentation. Civil rights supposed to protect people against race, color, creed, and age. One month ago, I called up the Department of Water and Power here in the city of Glendale, introduced myself, and asked them, very politely, to send me an application for my ninety-three-year-old mother who is deserving of a discount. As of thirty days, I have still not received that application. They know that they were supposed to send it in my name to my mother's address. If I don't get it and everybody in the city knows who I am, how many other senior citizens are not getting their fair shake? I'm going to start off with a joke since everybody likes to make jokes around here. A white man driving a white Cadillac, what is he accused of? White power. A black man driving a black Cadillac, what is he accused of? Black power. Mexican-American driving a brown Cadillac, he's accused of grand theft auto. I'm half-Mexican, so I can say that. This is Espirito de Rosa Parks. I went on the internet and I found a website where an individual has been going around, taking a look, and taking pictures of the Glendale Police Department. This is Tactical Guy Two. This is a Glendale police officer. "My son, you must be locked up. No more stupid videos." I don't know why he said to be locked up. This is also Tactical Guy Two. Cops are supreme human beings. That's an interesting comment. This is regarding Starbucks on Western in Glen Oaks. Why did you take some videos of Armenians, I'm not going to say the next word, selling dope and stolen credit cards to each other? I'll let you read the rest of it. This particular number, fourteen zero eight eight GLW, fourteen eighty-eight is a police ID number that is issued to every police officer. GLW is the individual's initials. I would like the Glendale Police Department and the city attorney's office to take a look at fourteen zero eight eight GLW. I know who it is, but I'm not willing to divulge the name at this time, but I'm sure the city manager and city attorney and the Glendale Police Department can take a look and find out who it is, because this was posted on the website one month ago. And I think after what was presented here this, earlier this evening, and what is going to be presented later on this afternoon, I think there is a problem, and I think we should take a look at that. This type of comment regarding the Armenian community, especially at Glen Oaks and Western, where these people play games, enjoy themselves, there's no reason for them to make that kind of a comment. That concludes my presentation, and I hope to God that somebody takes a look at this. Thank you very much.
We have one question actually. Normally, we wait till the end, but this was, I think it was just a real quick one.
You said this was on a website? Which website did this come on?
If you go into --
Is it a city website?
No. This is on YouTube.
It's on YouTube?
It's on YouTube. This had over a thousand --
That's actually a video?
There's actually a video.
Of a police officer actually saying all this stuff?
It's a blog. He wrote it.
Okay. So, it's a blog on a YouTube?
Right.
Okay.
And if you go in on the search engine and put in the Glendale Police Department, you'll come up with quite a few different videos that this young Mexican-American boy has taken of the Glendale Police Department. Okay? So, you can take a look. It's there right away. It's easy to find.
Thank you, Dr. Espirito. Margaret Hammond, followed by Barry Allen.
I'm Mr. Mayor, resident of the city council, staff, members in the audience and out there. My name is Margaret Hammond. Well, here I go, sticking my head into the lion's mouth, but I am sick and tired of being called a bigot and a racist every time I object to a rule or law being broken or not enforced or form my opposition for to rent control. The Armenian members of our city repeatedly remind us that they comprise fifty percent of the Glendale population. Therefore, they have a right to expect their demands to carry a greater weight than Filipinos, Latinos, Koreans, Chinese, African-Americans, Irish, German, Scottish, whatever, Swedish. And therefore, I am a member of the minority in this city. Why should the minority members of our city have to accept the loud bullying tactics by the Armenian community every time they don't get their own way? All immigrants supposedly came to this country to be Americans, not to force other immigrant groups to accept the lifestyle they brought with them, simply because that group is the largest, be it outdoor grilling, illegally operating banquet halls, huge mansions, which all represent lifestyles that are incompatible with our city codes. Armenians have a word for non-Americans, ODA, meaning foreigner or others. Isn't this term discriminatory or disrespectful to other minorities? Aren't all immigrants foreigners? Do other ethnic groups who enjoy smoking come to our city council and cry about discrimination? If the Chinese, Koreans, Filipinos, Swedish, and Irish immigrant citizens receive a citation for a code or driving violation, do they claim discrimination because of their ethnicity? Armenians are always coming to our city requesting and/or demanding and expecting discounts for their Armenian-oriented events, like the Armenian Relief Society at the Alex Theater, the Armenian Festival at the Dugel Park, and the Homentanian Group received three hundred and fifty thousand dollars of money that was allotted for the pool at Pacific Park so they could buy a building in Los Angeles. The swimming pool in South Glendale will directly affect the quality of life for that neighborhood and all of the citizens of Glendale. I understand that the group, the Homentanian Group, is similar in services to the YMCA. However, they are not located in Glendale, and they direct their services exclusively to the Armenian community. The YMCA is open to everyone and is located in Glendale. I'm here every week to remind the council of past mistakes and simply urge them to follow the rules that are on the books. Lately, there have been numerous complaints regarding the regular speakers at city council. This is a public forum. You who are complaining and griping and so forth have the same right to come here, weekly as I do and others, that bring matters to the attention of the city council. Why aren't you here expressing your opinions and your gripes? As Spock would say, I think we need a melding of the minds in our community so that all of us can enjoy the quality of life that brought us to our jewel city. And I think we do need to have some kind of understanding between the different groups so that it doesn't go on and on, that we're made to feel inferior or they feel that we're making them inferior. It's craziness. It's got to stop, or the city is just getting more and more divisive, and it's no good. We're not doing our city a bit of good with the attitudes that are all over town that you hear. Thank you very much for listening to me.
Okay. Thank you, Margaret. Just ask my colleagues to buckle their seat belts until we get to the end of the speaker's period, and then we'll hear from colleagues who wish to respond. I'm Barry Allen, followed by Charles Hooker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council, staff, and of course, the public. I'm Barry Allen. A little change from the normal conversation and one that even the mayor will smile about, and I'm quite sure that Mr. Starbird and Mr. McFall will. Several years ago, I believe it was, Mr. McFall was describing a program that the city was going to invest in, which was ECIVS. It's a program to allow the city to get into a database of grants. And part of the ECIVS program is that we'll let the city buy in, but the city must allow nonprofits to be able to use that same database. But we have been using that database, and several things that have occurred, and one of them just happened, actually this morning. I was here picking up records, and we received a phone call from a foundation in Washington where we had sent a letter of inquiry, and they said, "We would like your letter of intent. We need it before October, some date in October, and our board will be meeting in January." We need it before October, some date in October and our board will be meeting in January." And the, the purpose of this grant that we will be applying for is defending basic freedoms and government oversight. They've combined two sections. So we'll be looking into that and applying for our grant and I want the public to know that the city came through with the E-CIVIS program and I think the city should be applauded for that and other nonprofits should certainly contact the city about getting involved. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Charles Hooker, followed by Vachi Mangasarian.
My name's Charles Hooker. I'm a second-generation Glendale. The city council owes Mr. Weaver an apology for the vicious attacks on him. Mr. Weaver is trying to look out for the best interest for the citizens of Glendale who do not smoke and they, and for the people who throw their cigarette butts on your lawn. There's certain people who throw them from their balconies of their apartments and they go down to the city drains, which eventually go down to the ocean and everybody pollutes our beaches and everything else. There's a certain minority in Glendale that thrive on these cigarettes and for their own health, I hope they give them up. And I also want to ask, say about, last week about the crappy remark by Mayor, our mayor, about Mr. Yosefian and Mr. Weaver being out together at a basketball game. Rodney King once said, "Why can't we all get along?" I also would like, after I left last, last week's council meeting, I mentioned about the lowering of our flag and I was chastised because I happened to bring this to the people to see the flag lowered at half-mast at one of the functions for a group of people. The city, Glendale's flag is up higher than ours, but somebody probably from this organization lowered the American flag. I don't think anybody from the city council would ever do anything disrespectful like that. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome, Mr. Hooker. Vachi Mangasarian, followed by Shahi Karoglian.
Good evening, gentlemen. Good evening, Glendale. I am Vachi Mangasarian. I would like to make this statement short and to the point. Mr. Weaver resigned. You're not man enough to sit here and look at us, resign. There's no room for bigots and prejudice in this dais, especially in the city of Glendale. You owe the Armenian community an apology. Mr. Weaver, your behavior and your arrogance tonight showed us that you're not trustworthy. You should resign. And for the hat lady, she was born bigot and she will die a bigot. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mangasarian. Shahi Karoglian, followed by Nubar Gavorkian.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Mr. Weaver, wherever you are, staff, public, good evening. Shahi Karoglian, Glendale resident. Well, Councilman Weaver has done it again. In a narcissistic way of feeling superior to others, time and time again, he has taken upon himself a hateful mandate to constantly discriminate against and insult a large segment of our community. In that process, he has brought embarrassment first and foremost to his colleagues on this dais and embarrassment to all those seven thousand or so individuals who have voted for him. At the same time, Councilman Weaver not only has betrayed the confidence of those American Armenians who have supported his campaigns, but he very openly has backstabbed them. Individuals like then-Councilmember Rafi Monukian and current Councilmember Ara Najarian, who campaigned for his reelections, owners of banquet halls whom we constantly hear criticism against, who donated their facilities freely so that he could raise funds in there, those American Armenian business owners who contributed to his campaigns time and time again, and those Armenians who voted for him, giving him yet another chance, hoping that he would correct himself. Yet, Councilman Weaver continued to systematically alienate, degrade and antagonize an entire community every time he had the chance to do so. The ban on smoking is just one of those opportunities. It is not the issue here. In his infamous comments in the Pasadena Weekly, even though he declined any comments there, he claims that most Armenians smoke. This statement was intended to encourage an anti-Armenian sentiment in this city, just like he did when the ordinance about banning smoking in public parks was being discussed here and also, time again, during the absentee ballot ordinance discussions. I just wonder, while receiving contributions from individuals with Armenian surnames, did Mr. Weaver ever complain whether they spoke proper English, whether they knew how to write their names on the absentee ballots, whether they knew how to write their addresses in proper English, or even to the point whether they knew how to put the stamp on that absentee ballot? Did he ever, did he ever care whether they were citizens of Glendale or not? Did he ever care whether they lived in this city or not? Yet, he makes a comment on another issue, that people outside of this city come here and express their opinions in support of an issue pertaining to residents of the city. And then, when they finally realize, meaning those individuals who have been betrayed by him, that they were being manipulated by him time and time again and began to complain, he stated he was tired of being called a racist. Direct attributions here. He was tired of organizations coming from outside of Glendale in defense of local residents' rights and that he was tired of receiving hundreds of letters complaining about his prejudicial behavior. Well, Councilman Weaver, he can do us and himself a favor by packing his stuff and resigning. He will not get tired anymore. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Donkeys free.
Is that, is Mr. Gavorkian here?
What was that comment?
He's not here? He's not here? Hold on. What was said?
An even off-the-record comment with you, Mr. Weaver.
Yes.
Ended by that comment.
Ladies and gentlemen. Ladies and gentlemen, Mr., what Mr. Najarian wanted to bring to my attention was a comment that was made in the audience after Mr. Karoglian spoke, which I did not hear over the applause and my reading the name of the next speaker. And that comment, which I'm not going to repeat, was made by Mr. Hooker. Mr. Hooker, not interested, not interested in those kind of comments in this, in this chamber. This is the people's house. We don't do that here. So you have a right to speak when you come to the podium. We all listen. All of us in this room at one time or another, those who have been here often before, we all agree, we all disagree, we all agree to disagree. That we're not going to do. That kind of comment, we're not going to have here. We're going to elevate the dialogue here. Thank you, sir. Now, is it my understanding Mr. Gavorkian is gone? He's not here? Okay. The next speaker is Ricardo Pimentel Jr., followed by Mike Molehill.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members.
Good evening.
I'm here because there was a day where I wanted to file a complaint against an officer that I did not agree with in his conduct and I spoke with the watch commander and the next thing I know, before I could ask him, we talked about what it was that I believed that the officer had done. He disagreed and I said, "Okay, fine." Asked me if I had any further questions. I said, "Actually, I do." In the end, I ended up in jail. Okay? For recording the officer in a public place, in his public official capacity. Okay? Trying to say it was a funny, but that, anyways, I was let go the next day. It was nighttime, so the day after that I went to speak with your aide, I believe her name was Christine, asked her if, if, if they condoned retaliation against people that wanted to make complaints against officers when they believe it was some type of misconduct. She said, "Well, she couldn't make a comment on that" and I asked if she could bring it to your attention, Mayor Drayman, and so I left. Okay, now, two weeks ago, unfortunately, same watch commander that had arrested me for filing that, or trying to file the complaint, I pretty much was confronted by an officer while I was in my car parked legally at a certain time here in Glendale and was told to show him my identification. And I said, "Well, I'm just sitting in my vehicle, I'm not bothering anybody, I'm not committing crimes." He said, "Well, your plates are from Hesperia." So now I'm wondering if anybody wants to visit people that live here in Glendale, if their plates come from a different city, are they also going to be told, "Show us your papers because you are not from this city?" Okay? And eventually I had four squad cars around me just because of that reason. I told them, "I do not need to show you my identification, not committing a crime, I'm just parked legally." When I called, I found out it was the watch commander, same one that had put me in jail. Next thing I know, in the end of my video that I recorded luckily, the officer tells me, "Well, I just wanted to make sure that you were okay, sir." I said, "Well, thank you very much." And he did that only because after I called the watch commander, the watch commander called them, I won't say his name, and told him, I don't know what told him, but they all left, they left me alone. I just got out of jail Monday because that same watch commander was in charge, same officer that harassed me prior to that, the week before, told me that I had broken the law because I was sitting in my vehicle. And, you know, I just wanted to find out if you condoned, you know, these acts by officers, if people are either sitting in their car because their vehicle comes back as a different city. And hopefully you can investigate this because I believe that, you know, it's pretty much retaliation for even trying to file that criminal complaint, or, you know, the complaint against the first officer. Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to get this gentleman's information or let me see if it's actually on the card.
We haven't.
You do.
We haven't. He's been in touch with members of my staff.
All right. We will be following up on that. Thank you. Mike, Mike Molehill, followed by Juliet Daftian? Is it Daftian or Dartian? I can't make out the words. You're next.
Mayor Drayman, City Councilman, Mr. Zern. Like to talk about the word "respect." You know, last week I made comments and Mayor Drayman criticized Barry Allen by calling him Mr. Silverman, a Jewish name. Then Mr. Mayor talked later on that he was also Jewish of an ethnic background. Okay, you just shut your head. Okay, but you said you were Jewish, fine. This evening, I missed the first part of your conversation, Mayor Drayman, but I heard what Mr. Weaver said when he said of calling Barry Allen Barry Allen, he used the word I let that go, but I was irritated by that with respect. No one's called Mr. Weaver. Weaver Hotsky, whatever he may be called, but we call him Mr. Dave Weaver, Mr. Frank Quintero, Mr. Drayman, Nazarian, etc. But then this evening, Mayor, you tried to be funny with those dancing toras.
Menorahs.
Menorahs? With a Jewish star and each councilman's face on it. Disrespectful?
Hardly.
Ethnic slur?
Baloney.
Imagine if we did that to Mr. Nazarian, Mr. Quintero, we'd talk about dancing sombreros, maybe, or whatever ethnic, okay? No respect. I'd like to thank Mr. Barry Allen, again, the sixth councilman out here. Now, this is, that is not what I came here to vote for, talk about, but you know, I was thinking here, I said, "We got eighty-two languages in this city. That means we have like about eighty-two cultures too." And you sit out up here and you make fun of people's names and their ethnic background, but nobody makes fun of your names, God forbid, because after all, Mayor, you get the last word. You know, in the last election, I didn't know who to vote for. I wasn't active in Glendale politics. All I know is that I'm in Glendale thirty years, Glendale High School, Wilson Junior High School, and I noticed the character of the city's changed. Good or bad, it's changed. And when it came to the election, I looked at all the people's names and most of those names were Armenian names. And there were only two Anglo names. One was Drayman and one was Weaver. And I said to myself, "Damn it, I'm going to vote for those two Anglos because I've had enough of these Armenians running my city." Well, you know, the longer I've been coming to the city council meeting, the more I've realized I made a mistake. Because I was basing people's ethnic background, but not their character. And I found there are a few people on the city council that I like their character and even, even if they are Armenian. Okay? So ethnic slurs, respect, I think Mr. Barry Allen owes an apology from you, Mr. Drayman and Mr. Weaver. Okay, now, the next thing I want to talk about, which was why I came up here for, was the article, comments in the Glendale News Press in which they made a joke of Mr. Barry Allen and Mr. Weaver, which says, "Find your own doghouse, Weaver." I'd like to make a comment here. In the community forum in the news press, it was primaried by Councilman Weaver and his insensitivity, insensitivity to the Armenian community on the issue of smoking. Nowhere in the community forum was found any mention of Barry Allen, the messenger, of Weaver's misbehavings before the city council on the July the twenty-ninth and his arrogance on the issue of smoking. Your paper is quick to criticize Mr. Allen with uncomplicated articles and political caricatures. I'd like to take a ride down memory lane, if I may. Meeting of July the twenty-ninth in which Mr. Weaver thought that Mr. Allen had brought before the dais was funny and ridiculous. Mr. Allen read excerpt from the passing Weekly in which our mayor was quoted as saying, "If you, if you're against smoking, you should vote for those three guys. You're up for reelection." Councilman Najarian, Quintero, etc. "I am against smoking in certain areas," Weaver said, asked for the mayor. I know I don't have enough time to finish this article, Mr. Mayor, but I'd just like to read the last paragraph.
Well, not the last paragraph, Mr. Molehill, but if you can just sum up or characterize it.
Okay. "Why am I and people who know Mr. Allen not surprised that the city council and senior staff are not respective of the work of Barry Allen does? He is a nemesis to them. With his background in law, with his background in public administration and private investigation, he challenges you, he challenges them. He is formidable foe and usually a victorious rival or opponent. Even he doesn't, although he doesn't get the last word, that's for you, Mayor." Thank you, Barry Allen, Councilman, the Phantom of the Opera, Barry Allen. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. Juliet? I don't know, Mr. I don't know. The answer to your good question, Mr. Yusefian, that's a bit bizarre for me, too. So, Juliet, is it Dartian or...
Daftian.
Daftian. Thank you.
Mayor Drayman, Councilmember, City Staff. My name is Juliet Daftian. A few council meetings ago, a Glendale resident by the name of Dr. Espiritu revealed to the Glendale community an offensive flyer that was prepared and distributed by a Glendale police officer. During the same meeting, City Manager Starbert noted that proper actions were taken against the officer. I ask you to tell the community exactly what measures were taken against that officer, and what steps is the city taking to ensure that something similar does not occur in the future again. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Rita Unikian, followed by Evelyn Hansen.
My name is Rita Unikian. I have lived in Glendale since 1989. First of all, I'm a single parent and have volunteered at the Glendale schools for twelve years. The reason of my concern to ask the city council members to please consider looking into rent control, especially for low-income residents who are struggling to make a living, I have handout that I needed to distribute to Glendale residents to sign and support Let people come and bring up smoking. No one in this city has come and complained about smoking until you bring it up. Bring up rent control and see how many people we come and speak. It will be more than the smoking. You can do whatever you want to try to get root of us. I am here to tell you and everyone in Glendale who wants to live here, who works hard for you, that we are going to stay here, and we are going to ask for rent control until we get it. And anyone who wants to come up here and tell me to get back to my own country, I want to tell them that this is not their country other. We are come here as immigrants. My grandchildren will not speak what accent, with accent. My grandchildren get willing, will not need rent control. But those people, God has no love for their rude and insolent behavior. My members, I don't know what's going on in my council members' meeting at least three weeks, for all the time somebody's come here and told for Armenian people. But remember, Armenian people, there's lots of people in here, and lots of help for everybody together. I don't know, I'm twenty or twenty-two years I'm living this country, but something wrong right now, I think. But I like it, you fix it. Because every Armenian is, when he is here, hard work and follow rule and very understand for every language, people is nicely talk together. But some people is here, and I hope you next time, not people is there for laughing or anybody for the Armenian. But remember, all together, put hand and work, hard work in Glendale. Every time is the fix and very care and very nice city, but I hope together live and together hard work, and everybody laugh together. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Unikian. Evelyn Hansen, followed by Ani Bagdassarian.
I'm Evelyn Hansen, resident of Glendale. Man, can't we just all get along, please? The people in this country have generally welcomed immigrants since our founding. We were founded by immigrants. Immigration isn't anything new to this country. If there's a single national symbol that we all identify with, it's the Statue of Liberty. I can't quote the exact words, but give me "You're tired, you're poor, you're hungry." We welcome them. We want them to come here to share in our better life. But with all the immigration waves we've had, everyone has wanted to come and be part of us, as we want them to. Now, I really feel we do a great disservice to people by saying, "Come here, but don't be part of us. Keep the language that you bring over with, and don't learn, you don't have to learn our language, stay separate from us." That gives divisiveness. And if there's anything that's going to set up prejudice, it's divisiveness. You set up an us-and-them attitude, and whenever you have us-and-them, you've got to have that "I'm good, I want to feel good about myself, so you can't be as good as I am, you have to be below me." That sets up prejudice. I have to admit, I am prejudiced. I like blue. That makes me prejudiced. I really like your tie, Mr. Nazarian. I think it's beautiful. I think it's much, much better than John Drayman's yellow tie. I don't like yellow. I'm prejudiced against yellow ties. I don't know if anybody's going to be upset about that. If they do, it's just something I'll have to live with. It just, that's prejudice. There are various forms of prejudice, and there are various levels. The prejudice that most people experience in this community, if there is prejudice against a group that comprises forty percent of our population, I don't see how it can be all that much. I mean, they're the largest ethnic community that I know of. They are different than me in many ways, as a Native American, a native Glendalean. But I'll tell you, I don't know if most Armenians smoke. I know that most of the smokers that I see are Armenian. That doesn't say that... Excuse me, but I...
Folks, look, this goes both ways. We're here, we're here, we're here to exchange ideas. Doesn't mean it's a position that we all support. But just like I admonished Mr. Hooker before, we're going to allow people to speak. Okay? All right.
Can I get my fifty seconds back?
Thirty seconds.
Fifty. It was fifty. I don't know if most of them. I just know what I see. But I've had roommates of various ethnicities, people who come over from foreign countries, and every Japanese roommate I've had has smoked. They say that their parents don't, but it seems to be part of the rebellion against the strict Japanese culture they come from, that's what they've told me. And they all come over here and start smoking. I'm not going to say that all Japanese smoke, but it seems like the young ones do, as part of their rebellious nature. I've heard that people in Italy smoke. It's just a cultural thing. Doesn't mean they're bad people. It just means that within their culture, that's what they do. I admire Armenians tremendously for their linguistic achievements. Just like most of the Armenians that I, or most of the smokers I see that are Armenian, I would say that ninety percent of the people I know that are multilingual to four and five and even six languages, ninety percent of those are Armenian. And am I going to be chastised for saying that? I don't hear anything from the audience on that. Probably, virtually, every Armenian I know is a better cook than I am, too. It's an admirable quality. It's just comparing them to me as an individual. We all, every culture has our positives and our negatives. I can say that Mr. Woodson, who was here earlier, I can certainly believe that he's been harassed by Glendale PD. I mentioned last week a banner that used to hang on Overbrand Boulevard. The attitude of Glendale PD hasn't changed, not since I was a kid. In ninety-six, I stopped a Glendale cop from physically beating a young man, a young black man. I jumped in, and if he was going to hit anybody, it was going to be me, but I used myself as a shield for this guy. He hadn't done anything wrong. And I was not treated well for it. That's it. Can't we all just get along? Just come together and get along? Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Hansen. Ani Bagdassarian, followed by Lenora Solis.
Good evening.
How are you?
I'm a little nervous.
Take a deep breath. We all are tonight.
Um, just before I start, I wanted to applaud Rita Unikian for coming up here for her strength, courage, and confidence for coming up here and speaking on her concerns. Last week during oral communications, a comment was made that I found highly offensive and purely ignorant. And I was just going to let it roll off my back, because we all have our own, you know, personal views and opinions on a lot of issues. You know, but then Margaret Hammond was up here tonight, you know, expressing her usual ethnic rants, and she said, "Come down here and gripe." Well, I got up off my couch, and I'm here tonight. And the comment that was made last week during oral communications was actually made by the previous speaker. I'm quoting her, "If someone wants to be Italian, maybe they'll be happier in Italy." Well, that's the comment that I found highly offensive and ignorant. If we were to incorporate that type of mentality, then should we tell the owners of Porto's Bakery, "You know what? You're proud of your Cuban heritage. Why don't you take your business back to Cuba?" The owner of Mr. K's Pizza, who is proud of his Greek heritage, who proudly displays pictures of Greece on his wall, should we tell him, "Pack up and take your business to Greece"? Should the owner of Max of Manila's pack up his business, successful business, by the way, and move to the Philippines? How about the owners of HK Market? Should they move back to Korea? My point is, is that Glendale has a vast array of diverse businesses, and we should all be proud of all of them. If you take all of these wonderful, diverse businesses out of this city, what is left? McDonald's and Burger King. I know a lot of people like those places, but to me, there's no culture there, there's no satisfaction, there's no enjoyment, there's no inspiration or motivation to carry out your culture and your heritage in this country. Yes, this is America, and when you move here, you're an immigrant, and your task is to blend in and assimilate as best as possible, to avoid racial tension, prejudice, or discrimination. I am a first-generation American, and I know what discrimination is, and I know what discrimination feels like. So, you have to understand that I, too, want to assimilate into the American culture, even though I was born here. But the point is, is that if you come to this country, yes, you are required to obey by the laws, but you should never forget where you come from or who you are. You should never forget your ancestors, what they have done for you in order for the place to be. I'm so grateful to my parents for immigrating to this country, for giving me the wonderful opportunities that I have today, and for my personal successes, and, you know, I hope to carry that out sometime in the future, you know, with my own children. So, that's all that I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. And our last speaker card is Lenora Solis.
Lenora Solis, resident of Glendale. Another speaker reminded me of something that I was commenting about regarding the discipline that the police officer received who made that horrible memo denigrating Armenians. If we can all remember Jose Feliciano, he is an employee, I don't know if he still works here, but he was an employee here at the city, and he sent out an email of, "How do you know that you're a Mexican?", and then it says something in there about "Chan class" and something else, you know? And, oh my God, he was brought up before the Civil Service Commission. I mean, he was just lambasted. He was demoted. He, his pay was cut twenty thousand dollars a year. And I thought, wow, you know, I mean, I don't know, I never knew Jose Feliciano, I never met him. I mean, all I know is that, I thought to myself, well, you know, I mean, I didn't get that from him, but I got that email that was going around a few years ago. And I mean, you know, I wasn't offended by it. It was funny to me, and I thought, well, guys, is this the email that they're all talking about, that this guy is getting demoted and losing twenty thousand dollars? And I don't know what his ethnicity is, but I have to assume, since his name is Jose Feliciano, that it's somehow related to some kind of Latino ethnicity. And I remember how he was treated, and I remember reading about that and thinking, wow, and hearing about it from Dick Sealy, who went to the civil service meetings. And here we have a police officer who is sworn to uphold the law, who we hold in a higher position because they're police officers. I mean, that in and of itself, I mean, it just, you have to behave in a manner that is above reproach. And for a police officer to create this memo and send it out and think it's really funny, and I don't even know what the ethnicity is of the person who did it, I guess we'll find all that out once the trial gets started. I mean, maybe then our community will be a bit more outraged. I don't know, because I don't know who did it. But all I know is that I think someone here said that he got six days off. And I thought to myself, wow, he got six days off, and Jose Feliciano was demoted, and his salary was cut twenty thousand dollars a year. There seems to be a little bit of imbalance here. I think you should really look into that, because to me, I think what this memo was far more outrageous than Jose Feliciano sending out an email saying, "How do you know that you're a Mexican if you know what chanka means?" Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. That was the last of our speaker cards. We will go to the council for comments. Before we go there, I just want to remind the council that we do have one new business item afterwards. So, just as a reminder. Yes, Mr. Dray?
Mr. Mayor, when the council members are done with their comments, I'd like to say something, if you don't mind.
All right.
So do I.
And so would the city clerk. All right. Comments? Go this way. Mr. Quintero.
Okay. Well, I'll start with Mr. Weaver's comments, which I'm going to take at face value. He says that he didn't mean to imply any ethnic slur. You have to take him at his words. His previous actions and demeanor, I don't think were very constructive, and I think he could have handled it differently, but he chose not to. As a result, for the past few weeks, there has been a lot of dissension, and I don't think anyone benefits by that dissension. Specifically, some of the comments he made about colleagues being after him to vacate the seat and so forth, I don't believe anyone is out to get Mr. Weaver. And these issues were brought up by the Pasadena Weekly article, so I repeat, no one's out to get Mr. Weaver. In terms of the smoking ordinance, we're still working against, or working for a smoking ordinance, so the idea that somehow we made a final decision is just not true. We're not there yet. We're still working for it. The council members that he mentioned in the article are all in support of a smoking ordinance. We've agreed to ban smoking in all common areas of apartment buildings, as well as other locations throughout the city. In terms of this idea that somehow it is the Armenian community that's for smoking, and that somehow they do not want the city council to pass an ordinance, while it is in a scientific poll, Varej Agajanian was on his TV program a couple of weeks ago. Fifty-nine percent of the people who responded to his TV poll were for the smoking ban. Fifty-nine percent. And he has had a program in Armenian-language television for many, many years. It's very popular. And yet, the overwhelming majority of the Armenian speakers that responded to his poll were for a smoking ban. So, it's absolutely ridiculous to say that the Armenian community is pro-smoking, and it just isn't the case. And then I mentioned another unscientific survey. In the cul-de-sac where I live, I am happily surrounded by Armenian families. We have a wonderful cul-de-sac. Everyone gets along. We have an Armenian family from Armenia, we have one from Iraq, we have one from Jerusalem, and one from Iran. All four of those residents are smoke-free. The adults don't smoke, and neither do the kids. So, to turn this somehow into an ethnic issue is just not, it's not appropriate. We were out to do what cities across the country are doing. We were out to do what cities across the country are doing, what the city of Burbank has done, what the city of Pasadena will be doing, and that was it. We were going for a smoking ban, and we will go for a smoking ban, because it's the right thing to do, because it's the healthy thing to do. Then in terms of Mr. Mohill, he continually is talking about Mr. Drayman addressing Barry Allen by his legal name. That's his name. His last name is Silverman. He continues to relate to the Jewish religion as an ethnic group. Jews are not an ethnic group. There are Africans who are Jews, who are black from Ethiopia, and there are blonds who are Jews who come from Northern Europe. There are Sephardic-speaking Jews who speak Spanish, a form of, a Spanish called Labino. Some Jews come from Eastern Europe and smoke, and spoke Yiddish. Still got smoking in my brain. And smoke, uh, spoke Yiddish. Others, as a matter of fact, uh, many of the Jews in this country that first came here were Spanish speakers, and we have Jews from Germany that spoke German. It's not an ethnic group. I think Mr. Mohill has to do a little bit of research before he continues to, to insist. And then in conclusion, you know, let me just say, I hope we can put this behind us in the next few weeks and move on. The smoking ordinance will be passed in one form or another, and it's time to, uh, to start focusing on other very important issues in the city of Glendale.
Okay, thank you. Let me just ask very quickly our city staff, when, when is that ordinance scheduled to come back? Do we know? I'm sorry, I'm looking the wrong direction, Mr. City Attorney.
I'm not sure it's actually in the forecast yet. We are working to bring it back.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I don't, I'm not sure we do have it in the forecast yet, because the staff is still trying to determine when it is we can bring it back, but we'll get a date at tomorrow's staff meeting. What is it? Oh, September 9th is when we have it forecast. I didn't catch it. So fairly quickly.
Thank you very much. Okay. Councilmember Najarian.
Thank you, Mayor. I am, I am not happy in the direction that this city has taken in the past two weeks. Uh, I'm afraid that the fragile equilibrium that we had between all our ethnic groups is starting to come apart at the seams. You heard some of my comments earlier today when I questioned Mr. Weaver on whether he, whether he did say those words, the words stereotyping the Armenian community as the smoking community. He said he did not say those words. We do not have the time, we do not have the resources to conduct an investigation. Uh, if we were an investigative agency, we'd send an investigator to speak to Carl Kozlovsky. We'd subpoena him for a deposition. We'd bring him in and find out what he had to say. And even at the end of the day, it would still be his word against Mr. Weaver's word. Continuing a he-said, she-said battle would not do this city any good. It would continue to inflame all sides of this issue. Because of that, I have accepted Mr. Weaver's statements on its face value. And he went out, after I questioned him, and unequivocally condemned those remarks that are put forth in the Pasadena Weekly. Uh, there are a lot of letters going around this community, emails, letters to the editor, phone calls. Someone has blamed the ANC for stirring this all up. Well, don't blame the ANC. Don't blame the Armenian community. They are responding to a slight, a slight in a published weekly newspaper. I don't know if we should call it a newspaper. It has news and entertainment on their, their byline. Uh, those words that were in that article were hurtful. They were harmful. They were ethnic stereotyping and ethnic bias, and we have to condemn them. And those were my comments last week, when we talked about, "Let's all get together, let's let bygones be bygones." Well, no. We have to push back. We couldn't ask Rosa Parks to chill out. And those were the contexts of my words. I wasn't, I wasn't analogizing Mr. Weaver's statements to the prejudice and injustice that were being placed on the black community in the early 40s and the 50s. Those words are hurtful, and we've heard them all before. We know what they are. Uh, All in the Family, Archie Bunker, uh, the dumb Polacks, lazy Mexicans, uh, the Welchers, the crafty Jews, with all apology to my Jewish friends, the drunk Irish, the rude French, the arrogant Germans. These are all unfair ethnic stereotypes that have been used at one time or another throughout our history. And they're wrong, and we have to speak up and say they're wrong. And if a group steps up and says that it's wrong, don't attack that group. Don't make it about smoking, because it's not about smoking. We have dealt with the smoking issue, as my colleagues have said. We're moving forward on strong steps toward protecting the health of all non-smokers. Is it as far as some of us on the dais wanted it to go? No. But I think it was a workable solution, a fair and balanced regulation that we hopefully will be passing. And this isn't Dave bashing at this point. I'm not out to bash Dave. As I said, I have supported Dave previously. My goal is not to kick him off the council so I have an easier election, and that's just simply ludicrous. But I think we, we have to all recognize improper comments, whether made by Dave or by the Pasadena Weekly, and stand up. We need to stand up, all of us, for each other, and say, "This is just not appropriate in our community." We do have a lot of other serious things to work on in this community. This whole ethnic issue and racial bias, and they're against us and we're against them, is not getting us anywhere. It's totally non-productive. Margaret, I'm sorry, but you, where's Margaret? Margaret's not here. Margaret's comments were borderline stereotyping. Please, we don't need to go there. We don't need to say, uh, something about, "All the Armenians are doing this," or, "All the members of this ethnic group are doing that." It's not productive. We need to move forward. As far as Ms. Hanson's comments, the Armenians have a 3,000-year heritage, and part of that involves language and culture. So when the Armenians insist on sending their kids to learn Armenian and maintain their culture, and their food, and their recipes, and their cuisine, in no way does that mean that they don't want to be part of American society. That means that they want to be part of American society, but hey, we've got this wonderful, rich background. Same with Mexicans, Latin Americans, Asian Americans, Europeans. That's what makes this country great. And are we all cut from the same cloth? No. Each and every one of us is different in our own special way, and we have to respect that and not be intimidated by that. And I just hope that we can put this behind us and not deal with it anymore, and we don't see any more instances of this. I'm ready to move on. I hope members of the community are ready to move on and accept the apology that Mr. Weaver made, and the condemnation that he made for those acts.
Excuse me, folks. Folks, please, 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 Councilmember Najarian has the floor.
I heard, I heard some apology. I heard a condemnation of those, of those words that were used in the article. I heard a denial that he made those remarks, and I don't want to repeat myself on that. But I think a, a further castigation is not going to help any of us. I think we need to move forward. All of us recognize that those comments were inappropriate. They were not something that should have been printed, whether they were quoting a councilman, or whether they were the fabrication of a overworked, or whatever, actor slash reporter. We need to move on. Not to say that if it ever happens again, we need to turn our cheek. No. But we have to let everyone know that this is enough, and it won't be tolerated. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Najarian. Council, you ready?
Oh, you know, I've been trying to stay quiet and out of this. I didn't come here last week, if you noticed, even Mr. Mayor brought that up. Reason I didn't come in here, because I didn't want to get involved in all of this. I've known Dave since 1989. Next year will be 20 years. Dave hasn't changed in 20 years. He will not change for another 20 years, or whatever it takes, until the day he dies. No different than I am. There's, there gets a point where we no longer change. We're set on our ways. Dave's set on his ways. He honestly believes he said nothing wrong, and he did not apologize. What he did is, he said, "The writer did not understand what I was saying," which is typical of what he did when he was in the coordinating council and attacked some of the people at the coordinating council when he was president. He'd done it before, he will continue to do it. So last week, there was talks about censure. So I thought about it. So what do you gain by censure? So you censured him. Then what? What we gonna do? Send him home to his mommy? No. He's not gonna do anything. He's still gonna be here. Call for resignation? You really think he's gonna resign? Come on! Wake up and smell the coffee. He's not. You know why? He has a constituency. Over 7,000 people voted for him. It's not the first time he has done this. He's done this five years ago, six years ago, eight years ago, in different items. How many times do you want us to put it all together? Did he get booted out? No. There is a constituency in this city likes Dave Weaver. There are constituencies in this city that like Mr. Quintero, they're the same, they're a different constituency like Mr. Drayman, they're a different constituency like Mr. Najarian, and a different one that likes me. We all have our own constituencies, for good or bad. But ultimately, I think, in my opinion, we need to deal with the city's issues. That's what we need to deal with. So in all due respect to ANC, and in all due respect to all Armenian fellows, and all the other citizens of Glendale, whether they're Armenian or not, all the smokers, which he says that's what he talked about, I like to apologize on his behest. Because some of those smokers went out there and voted for him. So to me, make a decision, policy decision based on the policy, not the public out there. And you know what? I'm not surprised with Dave saying, "Three of us are trying to put this together." How many of you guys remember World Rogers? How many of you guys read about World Rogers? How many times World Rogers talked about Dave's conspiracy theories? You've forgotten all those? Nothing new. Dave thinks there is this, this conspiracy that we all get together and do this. In the past, the conspiracy was, "Mr. Quintero and I are out to get Mr. Starbuck out." Do you see him out? He's still here. He's still here. He's not out. It's, in his mind, he needs to figure out a way, or he thinks this is a way, to get his way out, instead of trying to sit here and make the arguments based on the facts and what it is that he could do. And if, if he tried to deal with his colleagues in more civil manner, and not try to intimidate us, or bring in all this other stuff, he could get a lot more. I spent time and reviewed all the smoking ordinance stuff. I went back, watched the videos. It was a great debate. I thought we talked about a lot of issues. And after we put all of that to bed, he had to go and make those comments, which was unnecessary. But that's why I didn't want to really say much, because it's not gonna make a difference. So what did I tell today's face? Doesn't matter. I'm not gonna change anything. Doesn't matter. I think what we need to focus on is next week, what's on the agenda, what can we do to improve quality of life in this city and move forward? And that's what we need to do. And if we don't like this type of behavior, and we do not want to reward them, you know what? Concentrate on getting people into council that don't condone that type of behavior. That's all. Don't try to get Dave Weaver out. Don't try to do any of that stuff. It's, it's energy wasted. Just put it in a positive mode.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Councilmember Eusefian. Uh, just a couple of things before I go to the city clerk and the city manager, who also asked to speak. I wanted to ask, Rita's still here. Hi, Rita. I have a quick question for you. If you can answer it, if you can't, that's okay. If you don't want to, that's okay. But a couple of times, and tonight was one of them, you mentioned that someone is telling you to leave, or to go away, or don't, don't come here, or, uh, you've referenced that a few times. Who is it? Can?
I don't know.
Okay. Okay. What I'm asking you is, are you, you're not referencing us, is that?
No.
Okay, because I, I want to make sure that that's not something that is coming from this dais. People from outside. Okay. Thank you, thank you for that clarification, because it puzzled me last time, because I wasn't hearing that from up here anywhere. Just a couple of other things, just a clarification, Mr. Eusefian, because you weren't here.
But I watched it.
Well, I'm sure. But what you couldn't see was, there are a number of people who were here that were expecting both you and Mr. Weaver here, and when they came, they were surprised. And there were people that, like tonight, were irritated on both sides. That's why I made the comment about, I had no idea basketball was a, was a
I was not a
derogatory comment, so, uh, that's why I made the comment, although maybe they're both out at a basketball game. In any case, um...
I couldn't afford the basketball.
I want to just say to the public in general, um, that, you know, I agree with Mr. Eusefian and his characterization of the debate on the smoking ordinance. It was a very good debate. Did we get into it? Of course we did. That's what we do up here. We, we debate the issues. Some would say argue, maybe, but we do it within a constructive framework, and we come to a conclusion. Even something that is, was as emotionally charged as the absentee ballot application issue. Did we agree? Absolutely not. Uh, but we still dealt with each other in a respective, respectful manner, um, and we came to a conclusion, which, depending on your point of view, produced, uh, something beneficial. You may not feel that way about that issue, or this issue, or the next issue, but the point is, I think that if we can do that up here, that, that we should be able to do it out there. I want to come back to, and that takes me back to the comment that was made after Mr. Karuglian spoke. We can't, we can't have that, folks. We cannot have that. We can't have the catcalling. I understand a certain amount of applause that goes on, or, or praise that goes on. I don't try to gavel that down all that much, because it's human nature, that's, that's how we are. We react sometimes. But to make a calculated comment that is, uh, of that nature, I, I don't want to hear that here. Let's not do that here. Let's elevate the dialogue, and let's elevate what goes on in this chamber. Uh, there's plenty we don't agree on. We can, we can deal with that separately. We don't need the, the catcalling and the, and the comments. Mr. Mohill comes up here nearly weekly now, and he has things to say that are his opinion. We don't agree. He knows that, and I know that. My colleagues know that. People who watch regularly know that. But we're not gonna allow people to catcall while he's making his comments either, from the audience. We're not gonna allow people to make a comment about his background, or his nationality, or whatever. We're just not gonna do that. That's not what we do here. We can have a debate, it can be a good debate and a strong debate without going there. All right. We do have, uh, the city clerk has asked for a moment, so let me turn to him.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And council, um, I'm at a loss for words. I guess I was more eager to say something right after a lot of those comments were made, but I, I'm gonna say it nevertheless. I took some notes down. Oftentimes, I'm asked by the public, or members of the public, what the hardest part of my job is, and, and tonight's a pretty good example. Listening to the comments and generalizations that are thrown out in the politic, in the public arena from that podium that podium right there to my right, sometimes I wonder what any resident of this city has done to deserve what passes as dialogue and lack of respect in these chambers. I've become fluent, unfortunately, in the doublespeak often used to denigrate people of various immigrant groups, backgrounds, whatever it may be. And I would like to give the people who make these comments, however, the benefit of the doubt. But one of the speakers here tonight confirmed everything that others suspect when describing his methodology when he goes into the polling place as to how he casts his vote. The fact that some people, out of fear or ignorance or whatever it may be, judge others not by the content of their character but by the ending of their last name is unfortunate, and this day and age is un-American. I was in Gallup, New Mexico this last weekend, visiting my older brother. And I was in Gallup, New Mexico this last weekend, Mr. Mayor and council, and members of the public, visiting my older brother. And while we were there, I had the opportunity to witness and attend the 87th Annual Intertribal Ceremonial, where thousands of members of the proud nations of the Navajo, Hopi, Zuni, Pueblo, Akama, Cheyenne, Kiowa, Cherokee, Comanche, and Apache people performed their traditional dances. And, folks, these are nations, not cute names for cars manufactured by Detroit. These are people. And as I sat there watching these people perform their traditional dances, I thought about something. While some of the people here in this chamber's gripe about immigrants who are unwilling to adapt or assimilate, I can only imagine that these proud people have the same frustrations with us. The event was attended by the survivors, by the way, of the direct relatives of the Navajo Cotochers, whose language helped win the war against our nation's enemies during the Second World War. I'd like to also mention that one of the most decorated Marines during World War II was Sergeant Victor Transport Malakian of Fresno, California, who was of Armenian descent, and after whom a wing of the VA Hospital in Fresno is named and on whom the movie Gung Ho was based. What is the hardest part of my job? Doing what I do for the people of my hometown, Glendale, California, knowing that no matter how hard I work for my community, for some, I can do nothing right. The easiest part of my job, however, is knowing that the vast, vast majority of the people in this community are kind, caring, friendly, welcoming, and hardworking, whether they wear a police uniform, whether they serve on the council, whether they're my colleagues or just people I encounter every day on the street. They are people who wish the best for our city and our neighborhoods. So I wish those people the best and I'll continue to work for them, and I hope will work with me for the betterment of this city. That's my piece.
Thank you, Mr. City Clerk. Let me turn to the city manager.
Mr. Mayor, a couple of things, responding to a couple of questions. First, with respect to the American flag at the civic auditorium and Mr. Hooker's concerns, we're looking into the basis on which the flag was flown at half-staff. We believe it was a president's proclamation. But in any case, the city flag should have also either been taken down or flown at half-staff. And so we're going to, in this case, have to speak to the employees there and make sure they understand the city's policy and the flag etiquette code on that matter. With respect to the picture of the police car, I can't legally discuss the specific level of discipline that was meted out to the officer involved. I will tell you, it was considerably more than six days. It was considerably more than the two weeks that was referenced two weeks ago here in this chamber. But I'm not at liberty to discuss the specifics of it. I will tell you that having worked in local government for now, I think, close to 38 years, over 25 of those is a city manager. In an organization this size, hopefully, your city manager isn't to blame for many of the bad things that go on, but ultimately, your city manager is responsible. When this event occurred and I became knowledgeable of it, I can't describe to you the level of discouragement and disappointment, because I think we've worked hard in the past 10 years to elevate the attitudes and the thinking in this organization to be more reflective of this diverse community. For that reason, it was a tremendous disappointment that this person could do something that is so contrary to what we believe in. To the extent that it has hurt people, and I know it has within this department, and the extent that it has in the community, as the person ultimately is responsible, I sincerely apologize for that. I wish I could have done something before to stop it. Obviously, we need to redouble our efforts, because not everybody gets it. But I would also ask that this act not be used to paint the entire city organization. We're over 2,000 people, serving over 200,000 people. We come from all walks of life, all backgrounds, all ethnicities, at all levels of the organization. And I think, by and large, the employees of this organization do their best to serve the residents of this community in a way that is fair and unbiased and representative of your values and my values. But to the extent that it has been hurtful, I apologize. And to the extent that, obviously, some people don't get it, we will redouble our efforts. Lastly, in that regard, I need to say that the joke here this evening that was made by Mr. Espirito, under our city policy, had it been done using city time or city equipment, would have fallen under our zero tolerance policy, and there would have been discipline meted out in that regard. That doesn't mean somebody would have been terminated, but it does mean that somebody would have been called on the carpet, and if it occurred again, the discipline would have gotten even greater. That sort of reference isn't allowed, whether you happen to be of the particular protected class, I'll call it, whether it's religion, ethnic, or sexual orientation. We don't permit it in the organization. And that joke, even though may be made by somebody of that ethnicity, wouldn't have been permitted and would have been contrary to our city policy. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. All right. One second before we get into this. Any other comments before we--staff or--okay. Mr. City Clerk, our next item.
New business. I move that the claim in lawsuit entitled Rubin Malian versus City of Glendale, case number EC-044501, brought by and through his attorney law offices of Nora Josepian, the compromise is settled and the same be in is hereby approved and accepted for a total payment in the amount of $27,000 to plaintiff Rubin Malian and Law Offices of Nora Josepian, and the Director of Finance is authorized to issue a warrant for said sum for delivery by the city attorney upon the entry of a dismissal with prejudice and execution of a release in the above entitled case.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Councilmembers Najarian?
Yes.
Conterro?
Yes.
Weaver?
Aye.
Yusefian?
Yes.
Mr. Turej?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We are adjourned.